Good evening. I'd like to bring this meeting to order. In order to access translation, push the button that looks like the globe on the bottom of the screen. Good evening. I am calling to order the January 26, 2022 regular meeting of the West Country Costa Unified School District School Board. At this time, we're going to do the pledge allegiance and we will have trustee Reckler and then after that we'll follow with. Thank you, and now we will have the last announcement.
We recognize that we are personally on the land, lands of the Chichenio Muwetma Carcan Oloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you. Now we are moving on to A4, welcome. And meeting procedures, once again, welcome to tonight's meeting. We are about to go into closed session, but before we do, the board is here to receive public comment on any closed session item that is agendaized. The board then will adjourn to closed session and reconvene in open session to continue with the regular agenda at 6:30 PM. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn and you wish to make a public comment now on closed session item, you will need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak. And participating by Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine and accessing the meeting by phone. There is no yielding of time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speakers permitted. Please finish up the orange card, the comment card. Now, if you are here in the audience and if you are in the Zoom or attending by phone, please get in line by raising your Zoom hand now. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available by Zoom clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown App, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Finally, the order business may be changed without notice. Now, we are moving on to A5, roll call. Dr. Hurst, may I please have the roll call?
Absolutely. President Christian. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good afternoon, present.
Trustee Phillips. And trustee Smith Folds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me? Present.
All present accounted for with the exception of trustee Phillips at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now, let's close the items to be discussed. Sorry about that. The items to be discussed in closed session is the conference labor negotiation for various employee organizations and representative employees, public employee appointment of school principal and ex-executive director of business services, public employee discipline dismissal, defeats complaint, student discipline, ed code 3546, and one stipulated expulsion. Now, we will go to public comment on closed session items, are there any public comments? Okay, thank you. And we adjourned and we would go into closed session at this time. And we are continuing on with open session of the January 26, 2022 regular scheduled meeting of the West Country Costa Unified School District School Board. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for the translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available in the Zoom by checking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis, the manner in which the Board of Education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you in advance for your understanding and cooperation as we experiment with new ways to conduct the people's business while allowing for maximum participation, adhering to our values of respect and safety for the community. We have changed public comment format, which now occurs at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for no more than one hour and includes any agendaized and non-agendaized items. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. We about to start public comment, so raise your hand. If you are attending the meeting in person, you would need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on agenda item. Please finish those up hand that's in the Zoom app. Staff, in participating in Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon, Zoom app, or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding of time, nor is a substitution of speaker permitted. If you are making a public comment from Zoom, please raise your hand now. Due to the Brown App, members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now we'll go into public comment and we have a total of.
Point of order, President Christian.
Go ahead.
Are you going to talk about report or ratification out of closed session or at least say we don't have one or we do have one before we go to public comment?
Oh, yes, sorry, Dr. Gah. Now we are on to B2, to report a ratification of closed session. Dr. Hurst, are there any reports or ratification from the board closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have to report out Executive Director of Business Sanja Cha. The vote was as follows, President Christian, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Phillips, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Vote passed unanimously. We also had a principal appointment, Jelani Cortez. The vote was as follows, President Christian, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Phillips, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, no. The vote passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst. And I want also to make clarification. We will go back into closed session before we, you know, end this evening and so we'll reconvene back into closed session. And now we're moving on to public comment. And so, and I'll turn this over into the hands of staff. Before we go into the Zoom, we have one person that's in the audience. We'll make a comment and then we'll, then we'll go into the Zoom app. All right, we will have Kimberly, Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local 21 SSA President. Thank you very much for having me this evening and thank you for the outstanding appointments. Sanja Cha will be a outstanding executive director and I wholeheartedly am glad that you chose her. I would love to know who Ms. Cortez, which school Ms. Cortez will be principal of since I did not hear that clearly. So that would be lovely to hear very clearly loud. Complaints have been coming to me consistently from our secretaries, office managers, and other clerical staff, teachers, administrators, wanting to know how the office staff is to do their job if they are being COVID responders. They are doing COVID announcements, having to fill out all this paperwork, having to make phone calls home regarding COVID exposure, having to have parents come pick up these students. They're not able to get their job done, such as calling on attendance, marking attendance, talking to teachers, helping students get to class, register new students for our school district, which we are at a 838 people registering for next year. And since the beginning of the school year, we have, and I'm talking January for this year, for this semester, we've had over 100 people come and register with us. That's amazing for the second semester and these are kids returning to us from charter schools, private schools, other countries out of state. That means we're getting 100 people back into us. But if our teams that we have worked so hard to get them to be able to talk to their community, talk to their customers, are unable, are not able to do that, these people are going to walk to another school district or walk to a charter school because they're not getting the customer service. Please help us get these people served and make sure that our office staff can do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed on into the Zoom app, Dr. Hurst, before we Zoom, I mean, before we go into the Zoom app, Dr. Hurst wants to make a clarification.
Yes, just to clarify my report out for the principal appointment, that will be for Martin Luther King Elementary School for Jelani Cortez. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst, and now we'll go into the Zoom app.
Point of order, President Christian, I'm so sorry. I have a point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't see it on the agenda, but are we going to introduce the new student trustees because I see two new faces?
Yeah, the superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Sorry to interrupt President Christian.
All right, thank you.
Our first public speaker on Zoom is Jean Kinsler. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm Jean Kinsler and I work at Verdi K8 and I would last, like to ask the board to move forward with the opt-out COVID testing model. Any parent that chooses not to get tested at all or not to be tested at a school site has that right and they should have.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kinsler, if you mind holding for one second, President Christian, just a point of order. Could we raise the volume? We cannot hear the public speakers. Thank, thank you, thank you for, sorry for interrupting. Ms. Kinsler, if you wouldn't mind restarting, we'll restart your time if that's okay, President Christian.
Yep, restarting would be awesome. It's at 51, 50, 49 already. Good morning, good evening, or good evening. Good evening, board. I work at Verdi K8 and I would like to ask the board to move forward with the opt-out COVID testing model. Any parent that chooses not to get tested at all or not to be tested at school has the right to that choice. I, as an employee of the district that works with computers and who can navigate numerous computer tasks, had difficulties enrolling in a GVPS online testing enrollment. Their website is difficult to navigate and to understand. We have had the first testing company, when we had the first testing company in my classroom, I had double the number of students enrolled to be tested. Now I have less. I believe this is an equity issue. We need to change the way we approach this onsite testing. We need to enroll all students at, because it is much easier for a parent that might not be able to read or write to come to the office and request their child to be removed. It is much easier for a parent whose primary language is Spanish, Arabic, Farsi, Tongan, or any other language to be able to write a note in their language to request their child to be removed from the list. We have people at the district who can translate these notes and they can be put in their Q and folders. I also wanted to say that I'm disappointed about Ryan Phillips telling the East Bay Times that the district is taking steps to provide all employees with multiple KN95 masks each week. I'm wondering what happened to the other masks. I received one this Monday in my box. I teach kindergarten. This age group has difficulty keeping their masks on. They're four and five-year-olds. For four and five-year-old reasons, they just can't keep these masks on. It is crucial. I have four confirmed active COVID cases in my class and two cases of family exposure right now. I make sure each student receives a surgical mask and that they, and I need to make them fit correctly. I tie their ear straps. I put a staple on the edge. I make sure there are no gaps. I make sure these masks fit snugly on their face without gaps. I'm doing everything in my power to keep them safe. Are you doing everything in your power to keep me safe? When I'm quarantined, who will take care of my students to the same level I do? Our students are split up and placed in other classrooms because we don't have subs to take all the classes we need.
Our next public speaker is Maggie Whitaker. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Maggie Whitaker. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, I am a parent of two children at Harding Elementary School and the current vice president of our PTA. I am speaking today to offer my solidarity with UTR during their negotiations for safe working conditions across all school sites during this time. Every person working for and learning at a school site at WCCUSD should have the following. PPE, high-quality masks for all, weekly testing for all, qualified adults in every classroom, and twice-a-week testing for classrooms with three or more cases, with the ability to shift temporarily to independent study during quarantine, period. Additionally, it is time that the board recognized the wrong that was acted out at the December 15th School Board meeting. Trustee Smith Folds should have been moved to presidency as per the bylaws as part of the fair rotation of board leadership. She was the clerk, not trustee Christian. It is a massive disservice to the community and a disregard of your own bylaws to continue to ignore this unjust move. Please address this and move trustee Folds to the presidency immediately. My final note to the board is that we're living in unprecedented times. What I see each week is instead of moving forward, acting from the spirit of abundance that ensures that all receive the equity they need, the board is stymied in the spirit of scarcity. We have unequal access to testing across the district with Title I schools suffering with insufficient testing, a lack of admin support, and that means that children in the highest need schools are not receiving the same access as in better resourced schools. That is not equity. You cannot serve your community without funding teachers, including substitutes appropriately raise their wages. You cannot serve their community without ensuring that all are being tested weekly and that contract, contact tracing is happening accurately. And you cannot serve your community by continuing to act dishonestly with one another and the public, act in service, not in fear. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Stella Miranda. Please unmute yourself. Hello?
So sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute. Hi, I'm, wasn't going to comment tonight, but something happened today at my grandson's school, Pinole Valley High, in which I had already directed an email to the board letting him know that last week he was in school, the full week before they even told him when he went to the attendance office, that he might have been exposed to COVID. So today he goes to school and what ended up happening is they pulled him from his class in front of all his peers and took him down to the office to go take another COVID test, which we had already provided the school that he was negative. Okay, there needs to be something done in the way that you guys are doing this process because it's not helping the situation, number one. Number two, my granddaughter, the same thing. She came home with her monthly because she was sick. The attendance office told her that they were going to put it down as a COVID case. What does a monthly have to do with a COVID case? It's absurd that they would even quote it as that. I think that you guys need to sit down with your staff and you guys need to come up with a plan on how you're going to better handle this situation because it's getting outrageous and it's not acceptable. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean Jr. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I am Jeffrey Bean. I am a fifth grade teacher at Shannon Elementary School in Pinole. I have been with the district for eight, almost eight years. So I'm coming up to my 10 years where I got to decide whether I want to stay in the district or move somewhere else where I start losing out on keeping my seniority when I move districts. I guess the, how things go in the next year or two is going to help me determine that. I'm calling or zooming with you tonight to ask for two things. Number one, same as I asked last week, I'd ask you to vote for the increase in funding for Shannon Elementary's multipurpose room. The multipurpose room at Shannon is old. It is probably older than me. And it is not appropriate for the number of students that we have at our school. Please vote for that funding. Second, as a member of UTR and a teacher, I believe many of us are frustrated with the district's district constantly being behind the game on COVID safety and on getting things ready for what's coming. I, I ask you to support UTR's requests, which are KN95 masks for every student, weekly testing for everyone with an opt-out possibility, qualified educators in every room, and twice-a-week testing when there's a COVID outbreak. The testing signup process is complicated. The website where you sign up is not easy to use. It requires two-step authentication. It requires you to make an appointment the first time you use it. And I think that there are many parents of my students who would have their child tested weekly if they, the system were simpler. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Our next public speaker is Sam Clear. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Sam Clear and I am a third grade teacher at Siege Elementary. Firstly, I would like to thank trustee Smith Folds, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, and the incredible student trustees for their continued support and allyship. I hope to get to work with other members of district leadership more as well. I would also like to thank everyone who supported Siege during our sickout, including media sources, families, and individuals at other schools. Next, I would like to give an update concerning Siege's treatment after our petition and sickout. The night before returning from our sickout, I felt proud and excited to come back. The whole community, including caretakers, staff members, alumni, and students had come together to demand a safe learning environment. I imagined the conversations we could have with district leadership when they came to our school and listened. Surely being highlighted by many news sources such as EdSource, K R O N four, and K Q E B, engaging in a sickout and collecting over 400 signatures in a local petition would draw some attention. Nothing, nothing happened. I have seen very few members of district leadership at our site. We were even called and told that leadership would come and help work with a class. They never came. Where are you? We feel ignored and disrespected, but we will not give up and we will just get louder and louder. Most members of district leadership continue to put our safety and the students' safety at risk. Most members of district leadership continue to put our safety and the students' safety at risk. We had to quarantine all of third grade because the students got mixed together in one room due to the staffing shortage. I had to go home because I had COVID symptoms. I am scared for my health and the students and families' health. Now take a moment and if you are caretaker for children, ask yourself, would you let your loved ones learn and work in these conditions? Treat Siege how you would treat your own children's school. We need to all be in this together. Thank you and hope you all stay safe.
Our next public speaker is Joseph Glazer. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm Joseph Glazer, six years in the district, history seven at Hercules Middle. I love working with my students, teaching them about cultures and religions around the world. Right now we're studying Buddhism, Hinduism, Jainism, Confucianism, Sikhism amongst others. Just today, a student told me they never liked history before they took my class. I can also say that the health of my students and families and myself and my family are priceless. I'm encouraging you to do what's best for students and staff. Please support educators by doing the following. Twice weekly mandatory testing for classrooms with outbreaks. We need to keep these outbreaks from happening so that students um and other adults don't get sick in the school. Weekly mandatory testing for everybody. Testing sites are very low, especially at my site Hercules Middle. Qualified adult in every classroom. Our students deserve qualified adults in every single classroom, not combining classes in unsafe fashion. And we need to massively increase sub pay so that we can attract people to come to work here. We need K95s for every student. We need mandated high quality masks to stop the spread so that people can stay safe. We're not being notified of cases on campus. Many parents told me they're afraid to send their kids to school right now. Contact tracing not being done properly at my school. I asked for follow up on a few cases in one class period and by the time I finally heard back, I was told, well, any quarantine that would have been required is now uh no longer necessary because the time ran out. So, okay, we're moving on. So is running out the clock really our district strategy so that we don't have to properly quarantine and test? I emailed Mr. Booker, never got a response. We have a right to be safe at our workplace and be free from fear. Uh, also, I want to say um approve the increased funding need for Shan's NPR. They deserve what every school has. What happened to equity? Also, a big shout out to our amazing and hardworking office manager, Ms. Chen, attends clerk, Ms. Rodriguez, and front desk, Ms. Petroni. They're awesome and amazing. And finally, trustee Smith Folds should be the president. The bylaws were ignored. It's unacceptable. People are not going to stop bringing it up. We're not going to let it go. She's the president as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Raphael Menace. Please unmute yourself.
Greetings trustees. Tonight I would like to again urge you to support the proposed item E1, increasing the project budget for the Shannon Elementary School Critical Needs Multipurpose Room Project. As other speakers before we have noted, and I'm sure speakers after me will noted, this is a critical needs project. The multipurpose room is well past its use dental, its usable lifetime and is not fit for purpose, even ignoring that it doesn't have sufficient space. It doesn't have sufficient equipment. It's not in a great state of repair. It's stated as a critical needs multipurpose room project, and I believe that critical needs is the correct way to view it. Towards the end of the last meeting, I believe at four hours, one minute and forty five seconds or so in the YouTube video that was recorded of it, I believe trustee Phillips stated that the board had previously voted on this matter and voted against it, that therefore a motion to reconsider would need to be made in order for this item to be considered. But I don't see looking over the list of past agendas a vote to strip the Shannon Elementary Multipurpose Room Critical Needs Project from the Bonds prioritization list or otherwise to remove that item. And I think that if a motion to reconsider does need to be made, then I'd urge that to be made and then for the regular item to be considered at this meeting as agendized because it's a critically important item and needs to be dealt with. It's been put off for long enough. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Christie Lamb Julian. Please unmute yourself.
Hello.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for continuing to have this open public comment session. It is imperative to have this and maintain an open dialogue in order for us to make any sort of progress at all. I'd like to thank those board members and trustees for responding to my email. To those of you that did not, I do understand that I am not in your area. Um, but I do want to ask, what is your plan on addressing equity in your area? What has worked? What hasn't worked? At the end of the day, we are all in the same district. We are all in this this mess together. And if we continue to pit areas against each other to fight for resources, it's just the kids that miss out. They are the ones that suffer and lose out at the end of the day, no matter what the income is, the outcome is, I apologize, to to that kerfuffle. And throughout this whole pandemic, teachers and educators have been there doing their absolute best with what they have into and to the best of their abilities. What is the district going to do to help support them, to support their first line of defense in this pandemic? Can we get them better masks? Can we try testing for all math, better masks for all qualified teachers in every class because they're not just babysitters. These are people's children. Um, and just I do highly support testing two times a week if the classroom has three or more cases. It just makes sense. And if these kids have to miss out because they have to self quarantine, then can we do virtual learning? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Nashawn Williams. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, superintendent and board. I, my name is Nashawn Williams. I'm the eighth grade math teacher at Dejounte Middle School and the UTR rep. Um, I would like to know um the student attendance numbers district wide. Um, it was presented, I believe, last meeting or the meeting before. Um, I think it would be nice to have that number ongoing every day. I would also like for us uh board members to honor the bylaws and promote trustee Smith Folds to the president. Um, I'm also advocating for increased sub pay. I'm also advocating for Shannon Elementary to get a new NPR. In addition to that, um, I would also like to encourage you to do what is best for students and staff. Please support us. Please support the students. Please support every educator in this district by providing twice weekly testing for classrooms with outbreaks. And in addition to that, providing twice weekly testing in middle school and high school um when there is a case, testing close contacts. Because as you all said before, there's no number for outbreaks. So in middle and high school, every close contact needs to be tested. Um, please support us by um weekly COVID testing for all. Um, please support us by having a qualified adult in every classroom, not just a warm body. Um, and lastly, please support us by supplying KN95s for all. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Gabrielle Michaletti. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, Gabrielle Michaletti, first grade teacher at Verde K eight and elementary director for UTR. Um, I want to start by reminding this board that in order to restore faith from this community in what you are doing, you should be acting within your own bylaws. Jamila Smith Fold should be instated as president of this board. She was trained all of last year and has strong understandings of procedures and would be a strong leader. On a different note, I'm here to advocate for the safety measures UTR is currently requesting. These include KN95 masks for all, weekly testing for all, twice weekly testing for classes with multiple cases, and a qualified educator in each room, not just a warm body. In particular, I want you to think about this twice weekly testing for classes with multiple cases. Over the past first three weeks of January, seven of my 24 students tested positive and a few more have been symptomatic but untested. Three the first week, two the next week, two the following week. I can't help but wonder if we had had twice weekly testing after the first three cases were identified, some of these later cases could have been mitigated. With all these cases, my classroom has been chaotic. Children are coming and going. Last week, the most students I had on any given day was five. Last Friday, I had two students. While I had these students, 22 of my other students had no education because this board would rather I teach two students in person than move online for a week or two when a third of my class has COVID. I've heard from people saying, some people say that Omicron is dying down, asking why we need to think about any of these contingencies. How many times must we repeat the lesson? Is better to hope for the best and prepare for the worst? I deeply hope we are reaching the end of this pandemic. However, we've heard of this possibly happening before and then a new wave comes through. Let's have a plan. So if the worst does happen, we are prepared and can respond in a way that keeps our education most consistent and supportive for our students.
Our next public comment is A Alvarez. Please unmute yourself and state your first name for the record.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Arancha Alvarez and I'm one of the UTR Teachers Union reps at Nystrom Elementary. At Nystrom, we're currently weathering this storm pretty well, obviously, under the circumstances. Um, we're fortunate enough to be experiencing less staffing issues than other schools in our district. We have incredible leadership and support staff, clear and transparent communication around safety issues, and a teaching staff that is still going above and beyond almost two years into this pandemic. But at Siege Elementary, not three miles away from Nystrom, you heard one of their teachers tell you earlier tonight that they had to shut down their entire third grade because all of the classes have been put into one room because of staffing shortages. Siege has been operating basically without a functioning administration because their principal has had to be forced to be a fourth grade teacher. All UTR members are now facing a potential call to strike. I don't want to strike. None of us at Nystrom want to strike. None of you want us to strike. But you're putting me in an impossible position because now I need to fight for my colleagues at Siege and across the district and for all the students of West County. I urge the district to please go back to the bargaining table tomorrow with a plan that includes twice weekly testing for classes with COVID outbreaks. If we cannot close these classrooms down, we must do at least that to protect those students and teachers. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is C Peters. Please unmute yourself and state your first name for the record.
Hello, my name is Carol. Um, I want to start off by saying this. Um, all of you were elected officials. Um, well, four out of five of you were endorsed by the UTR this last time. Leslie was proud to display that she was the teacher's choice. Be who you said you were going to be in your interview for UTR endorsement. Support us. Oh, three, you said your priority is for safety for students and staff. Prove it. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, you said retain and recruit quality educators, improve transparency and accountability. Keep students safe. Show us. Phillips, uh trustee Phillips and trustee Smith Folds, your pages, your campaign pages aren't up there anymore. But I will say that um trustee Smith Folds posted on her Facebook that she stands with the teachers. Thank you for your bold proclamation. Dr. Hurst, we are also watching you. We forgave, not forgot, your early faux pas when you first got hired. So please don't make us regret forgiving you. Do better, all of you. Do better. We expect transparency. We expect that you will tell us what's really going on. We want to know, the community is still waiting for an explanation of why the board chose to ignore their own bylaws, nine one zero zero, and not elect Jamila Smith Folds to president of the board. Even when the lawyers were present in the December meeting, you didn't give us an explanation. It is our duty to hold you accountable as elected officials by speaking up or not reelecting you. Tell us why you pick and show, tell us why you pick and choose which rules you will follow. This type of behavior from uh trustees, Mr. Phillips, Leslie Reckler, and oh three Christian specifically is disappointing. Let us know what's going on. Do better. If you don't want to do better, resign.
Our next public comment is Marissa Glidden. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Glidden. I'm a third grade teacher on full time release to serve as president of United Teachers of Richmond, representing the incredible educators throughout our district. As we all know, everyone in the district, but in particular, our educators and support staff have been working tirelessly to support our students. This year has been hard and this month has been for many of our educators, the hardest in their entire careers. But despite the challenges, our UTR educators are organized, united, and ready to do all we need to make sure our students have the schools they deserve throughout the entire district. We support one another and we support all of our schools. We are committed to doing all we can to provide our students with the best education possible. And a key part of this is making sure that our schools are safe. To do this, we need support from the board and the district. Our educators are professionals and experts. They know what's happening on the ground and know what changes would make a difference. Educators have brought for have brought forward for very reasonable safety demands that frankly should have been implemented long ago. These demands would make an enormous impact on our schools. KN95s for all, weekly testing for all, twice weekly testing for classrooms with three or more positive cases so COVID does not just spread throughout our schools, and a plan to make sure a qualified adult is in every classroom. We stand in solidarity with students and family members that have also brought forward similar demands. We appreciate the district has met with us multiple multiple times this week and we believe that progress is being made and more progress can be made together. UTR is committed to working together with the district for as many hours as needed to reach an agreement that keeps our students safe. We believe safety is important and we believe educators and student voices should be heard. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Excellent pronunciation of my name. Good evening. I'm a Kennedy High School graduate. I'm a proud Kennedy teacher, special ed resource. And so tonight I am bringing you words from my students. I told them yesterday, hey, I'm going to the board meeting. What would you like me to tell the board? Like, why do you keep showing up for school each and every day? And here are some of their responses. I want to see my friends. I want to learn. I want to prepare myself for the future. I love learning about history. My mama gonna scold me if I don't. If I don't go, they're gonna take my video games. Um, my coach told me I better show up. My grandparents are like, you're gonna go to school and get this education. One of them said, me leaving the house, I'm gonna get away from my crazy cousin. And then one young person really shocked me. She was like, I want to get a good education. I want to go to college. I want to get a good job and I want to move to Canada. I was like, what? What you know about Canada? So that was like the one that was like this outlier. So I share all that to say, the students at Kennedy, my students at Kennedy are showing up. Like 98% of my students are showing up each and every day. So when they told me their responses to why they're showing up, I said, I'm showing up because you're showing up. So when you come into this classroom room 122, if I'm making it safe for me, I'm making it safe for you. I'm not waiting for the custodian to do his or her job because when I walk in that door, my desk are clean. My students see me uh clean desk. They even helped me at times. We got hand sanitizer and all that. So when they walk into my room, they're as safe as safe can be because I'm gonna take care of me, therefore I'm taking care of them. So I have an open invitation to my union president, Marissa, mask up and come on down to Kennedy High School and talk to our students. This invitation is also open to Dr. Hurst, um, every trustee, Mr. Booker, I don't know what your official title is, but you're welcome to, Ms. Martin, our CAO. every trustee, Mr. Booker, I don't know what your official title is, but you're welcome to, Ms. Martin, our CAO. Come and speak to your students. I teach them about self-advocacy and in part you could also help them learn how to self-advocate in the way to do it. So once again, my students are not abandoning their education and I am not, will not abandon them.
Our next public comment is Raka Ray. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Raka Ray. I'm a seventh grade science teacher at Helms Middle School. Um, right now I am finishing up a 10-day quarantine because I did test positive for COVID and 95% sure that I did get it from school. And also right after break, I had the flu. So I've been gone for like half the month of January and it's been really tough because I want to be there for my kids and you know, I'm pretty young, I'm pretty healthy, but I do tend to get sick when I'm stressed out as a lot of people do. And it just makes it really difficult when I know that when I go back that I'm not going to have a prep period because I'm going to be period subbing for all of the staff that are out, who will be out with COVID. We've had multiple, I don't know if the word is like outbreaks, but at our school, kids are co-horted. And so there have been cohorts where there've been, you know, seven plus outbreaks. And it just feels to me that that this situation is kind of untenable. It's really difficult and I want to provide a good education for my kids, but we just really need strong leadership. So I would just urge you guys to accept the four demands made by the teachers and educators of UTR. And I think everyone's kind of laid those out, but in particular, I'd like to highlight having an adult, a qualified adult in every room right now because the the subbing situation, I think, is adding to a lot of stress for a lot of us. Thank you.
Our next public comment is David Moju. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm a parent of a student in high school in West Contra Costa and in college at West Contra Costa. I again want to say thank you, Ms. Smith Folds. I acknowledge you as president and see that from the beginning of this meeting, you were on top of everything. The rest of you, I don't want to call trustees because it doesn't seem to be any trust from parents, teachers, students, community. You guys continue to fail us with policies and not follow up our programs to better the situation. You started a mandate for COVID vaccines. How's that working for you? How many people vaccinated have been sick already? You have to test. People have to stop taking vacations and thinking I'm okay because I'm vaccinated and bringing it back to the school. You can't be there with people with Omicron pulling your mask down to drink because it spreads more aerosol than droplets. You guys are not following the science. You need to repeal the mandate because the vaccination doesn't work. You can look around you and look at the numbers. I know from work that our workforce was devastated after Christmas holidays. You guys should have shut the schools down for about three weeks, let it blow over and bring back people slowly and test on the way back. You guys aren't following policies or implementing things that will keep our children safe, the teachers safe. I urge you to spread the money where it needs to go for these schools. You need to assess what's going on in all these schools. Appoint someone to get some data in there so you guys can address it. I urge you to look into better companies to support your masking. There's several big companies out there that are, that can supply masks, deliver direct to schools. So that's not an issue. Again, you guys aren't following your bylaws. This is ridiculous. How, how long are we going to go till you make Ms. Smith Folds the president? She should be the president. It happened to Mr. Phillips. I still got a minute and 59 seconds. It never ran. Hey, you guys need to make her president. This is ridiculous. Even your own board people, the people that came in to evaluate gave you an F. You continue.
Our next public speaker is Eric Swabett. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Eric Swabett. I'm a teacher at Lake Elementary. I think I've been there about 20 years. Last week I talked to you about Matt Wilcox, a play coach who was unjustly fired from Tara Hills. And I would like you to please look into that. Let us know. Let me know how that's going would be great. But tonight I want to talk about UTR's safety demands, the four demands that you've already heard about. Those demands seem very sensible to me and I think really curb the spread of COVID in our school district. I understand that some may question whether we can afford it in this time of strange attendance and attendance levels and the California's budget and things like that. But I ask you, you know, aren't our kids and our employees, they should be our highest priority. And I do think that if it's necessary to move money around to provide the safest learning environment for all those people, then we really need to do it. I really think you ought to take UTR's, my teachers of Richmond's four demands very seriously and please come to the bargaining table ready to give us a sensible, a sensible agreement. I'm here to tell you though that the 1,600 members of the United Teachers of Richmond are definitely prepared to do whatever is necessary to protect our children and ourselves. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lisa Disbro. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. I'm a graduate of the district and a recently retired teacher. I never wanted to retire. I retired due to the pressures of COVID, not because I was concerned for my own personal health, but because I saw that the policies and strategies being employed via the masking and the social distancing and the fear mongering was going, was abusive towards our students and staff. I want to, this evening I want to talk about preventative care. The West Contra Costa website speaks about comprehensive COVID treatment and I think it is far lacking. I recently attended the chat called Plática con una doctora where the fear of COVID was enormous. I think that this fear of COVID and the health of our students, staff and community could be addressed if we were to mention on our website the four vitamins, vitamin D3, zinc sulfate, vitamin C and quercetin. We all know that preventative healthcare is the best tactic to prevent suffering, to prevent quarantining, testing, worrying and the excessive administrative tasks associated with all of the supervision involved. We owe it to our students and our community and our staff to address how individually vitamin D3, zinc sulfate, vitamin C and quercetin can alleviate much of the worry, strengthen systems and minimize the impact of COVID-19 on our individual health. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Chandra Scher. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Chandra Scher and I teach second grade at Aloney Elementary School. I've been in the district. I think this is my 16th or 17th year. And I really love what I do. I have an amazing class. I have a number of really high-risk students with medical conditions this year and I'm deeply concerned about their safety and sustainability for the educators at my site and the educators across the district. And so I'm here to talk to you and encourage you to do what's best for students and staff and support us by doing the following. Provide twice weekly testing for classrooms with outbreaks. Weekly testing for all with an opt-out option. A qualified adult in every classroom. It's not sustainable or safe to keep splitting kids up, especially when the classrooms that are being split up are being done so because the teacher has COVID or there has been an outbreak in the classroom. And KN95s for all. I would really appreciate you supporting this. We are prepared to do what is best for the safety of our students and we will continue to fight for that until the very end. So please support UTR and our students in creating a safe learning environment for them. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Joanna Pace. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board and superintendent. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of Public Corps, a group of local citizens and volunteers who advocate on behalf of transparency and accountability. My comments tonight are about a couple items on the agenda. C6 is where you talk about renewing, or you talk about a lease for a charter school is not informative the way it's listed. It's not clear from what the public could access on the website. If this is a renewal at the same site or if this is a unfacile use document for a new site. So please make that clear when you take up C6. Item E4 about the 7-Eleven committee. When you get to that item, could you please clarify for the public, those who may not have seen the appeals that went out to recruit members of the community to serve on this committee, that this, they were recruited by, in the material that was gone, that went out by naming the task before the committee is to figure out, to recommend and what's going to happen with four specific sites. That's Portola in El Cerrito, Harmon Knowles, I believe was the second one, Seaview, I believe was one, and Adams in unincorporated Richmond, in East Richmond Heights. If I've got those wrong, please clarify that when you take up item E4. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is David Bellew. Please unmute yourself. Hello?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. Was I, I'm, am I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Ellen Bellew, his wife, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking as a parent at Harding Elementary and I feel like I'm speaking for all working parents who couldn't come in and raise their hand and advocate for this. I hear what the teachers want. I hear that they want better masks and I feel like they should be given that. I hear that they want more testing and that doesn't seem unreasonable. I feel like the website is very unclear and I'm not sure how much support has been given to families to opt-in. So I like the idea of the opt-out instead of an opt-in. I'm really unclear about why we still need to wait on legal guidance for that when it, when the district already voted to require vaccination. The non-invasive testing procedure seems much less invasive and it feels like a reasonable ask to control spread. And, and I also feel like enhanced testing is reasonable when you feel like there are more cases in the school, but I also hear a lot of fear in our district and I worry about that fear in our district and the unhealthiness of it. The virus is now endemic and so the way that we approach it really has to change. I have good news. If your kid is vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine unless they become symptomatic. So get your kid vaccinated so they don't have to stay out so much and to protect your schools and be safer in the schools. Staffing issues still seem horrible. I would like to thank my trustee, trustee Reckler for letting me have a window into her own experience being immersed in the school environment. I would like to thank the board and the superintendent for responding to emails with clarifications about new masking procedures. And I just really want to acknowledge that the district, I feel, is trying to do things to support the district. And I would like the teachers to listen and striking doesn't seem reasonable. That, that doesn't feel productive. I want us to keep working together. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Our next public speaker is Ronnie Louie. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Ronnie Louie. I'm on the teaching staff at Shannon Elementary. And I just had a couple of thoughts. That's the request for additional money to build a multi-purpose room at Shannon. Hopefully, just our information I've heard in there, hopefully I'm close to being fairly accurate, but the original plans to build were estimated to cost 7.1 million in 2016, but due to the increase of building materials and labor shortages, I guess. They said to build it now would cost 9.3 million. And you know, we know the price of lumber has really shot up, but this means you're going to be cutting 23% from materials and labor, which is sort of going to be noticed. So I was just wondering, well, to myself basically, what's going to be cut from the plans if we don't get the 2.2 million increase? Hopefully, we're not going to lose the kitchen or stage or square footage to the point where the building would not be that usable for like whole school assemblies or whatnot. But, you know, and second, I was just wondering if it's, new plans have been drawn up and, you know, has it been looked at and considered before the vote is taken on this? Okay. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Our next public speaker is Tina Holmes. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tina Holmes. I'm a parent of third and fourth grade students at Shannon Elementary. I'm here this evening to raise attention to the agenda item related to the need for additional funds to be able to build a proper multi-purpose room at our school. Currently, Shannon has no multi-purpose room, no gym, and our lunch is processed out of a very old modular building. I've never seen anything like that. My kids have started school here. I haven't seen any other schools other than my own. Growing up, my elementary school had a multi-purpose room. It was in our multi-purpose room that Ms. Pittman and our third grade class performed How Lucky Duck Became Sir John Swan. And I sit on stage leading sign language. It's where PE was held on rainy days and you knew Mr. Conchaver was going to break out the parachute and play balls for a period of fun. It's where countless assemblies were held, rain or shine. I know these names don't matter much, only to point out that this was 30 years ago. And I remember these wonderful times spent at school. And I want our kids to have these experiences and memories of their own. And please vote to give them a proper multi-purpose room, please, and thank you.
Our next public comment is Teresa Hardy. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, board, district, staff and Mr. Hurst. I'm a Valley View and Soskin parent. I have three kids in the WCCUSD district. I wanted to say thank you so much tonight because I know that there are many people on this meeting tonight that are working so hard to keep our kids safe to get us through this pandemic right now. I wanted to say thank you so much for placing Ms. Jackson at Valley View. She is our sub-principal for the last two weeks. She is competent, passionate and delightful. People are coming out of retirement to help and I so appreciate that. Our community has been thrilled to have her. We've missed this leadership this year. Also, I wanted to thank you, say a thank you to Dr. Joyner for helping out while our onsite admin is out on medical leave. My concerns are winter onsite admin returns. We were told there would be a very detailed plan that would be in place. We want to make sure at Valley View that we continue to have that support from the district and that the process is really transparent. Please continue to keep us updated and do what you said you would do in our past meeting. I also wanted to say that we and our family strongly support the UTR teachers. We think that all the things that they are asking are very important. These are our hard-working staff and teachers and they are the gems that educate our young people. Please help Richmond High ASAP. It's a disgrace how they're being treated currently. And start thinking about COVID protocols as surge, non-surge. And start thinking about COVID protocols as surge, non-surge, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time we go through this. COVID is here to stay. Please start planning accordingly. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is George Persley. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. As resident of Penole for over thirty years, I want to encourage you to increase the project budget for both the Shannon Elementary Multi-Purpose Room and Hercules Science Building Project, especially now when schools need to be as flexible as possible to meet the needs of the students. Lack of a functional multi-purpose room at Shannon severely limits the teacher's ability to keep students safe and to keep their in-person learning on track. After listening to the deplorable condition of Richmond High students having to pack into a room without heat at last week's public comment, I was reminded that the heat where my wife works at the John Adult School has been inoperable for two plus years now. When the adult school principal first brought in standalone space heaters, he placed them in such a way that the fire department said they were a safety hazard. This is the same principle. You couldn't be bothered to see whether there was a working computer or a working phone or even a fire extinguisher in the building when my wife went back to work last fall. Why I completely agree that subs need more pay. I also agree that there are other considerations that prospective subs and teachers have before they've come to work in our district. This egregious lack of regard for the basic health and safety of our teachers and the students at too many of our schools is certainly something that does not go unnoticed. Maybe your mission statement to start with, get heat into the classrooms. Maybe Mr. Freeze can figure out after two years how to unfreeze my wife and the other teachers and students at the John and Richmond. I also support trustee Bolt be, being the president. I think that ignoring the bylaws exhibits a very cynical and sinister brand of politics and dysfunction. Another reason that prospective teachers may very well consider other options. Thank you for listening.
Our next public speaker is Aseedo Wilson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Sado Wilson, educator at Richmond High School, UTR treasurer, executive board member, and a lot of things on my plate. So here's something that I'd like everyone to consider. Let's talk about listening. Not hearing, listening. So we have listened to what the district, what the school board was going to promise our schools in the wake of this pandemic and its various variants. We have listened to, or in my case, read the email responses. We've listened to school board meetings that have said, we have read your emails. We hear you. We're working on it. We have listened to the county health department say that everything is fine. And yet they have not been on any of the campuses in the district. Showing up the next day after a school board meeting to save face is not enough. Listen to the community. It's very clear no one's been listening to teachers who are in this profession, who are dedicated to take care of the youth in our communities. But now that the communities are speaking and saying, listen to teachers, listen to those that need help, listen to those that need all the proper resources. So it's all about listening. So are you all going to listen? Is our area director at Richmond High School going to attend our campus finally? Because I have not seen him on my campus and I've been there for six years now. Thank you, trustee Smith Foltz for stopping by. Thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoy for stopping by. And thank you, now President Christian for stopping by and meeting with me. Appreciate that. But listen, don't hear us, listen to us.
Our next public speaker is Evelyn. Please state your last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Smith. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you repeat your last name?
Yes, Evelyn Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am a special education teacher. I've been with our district for twenty years. And I want to first acknowledge previous speakers that please follow your own bylaws. And Ms. Smith, trustee Smith Folds should be the president right now. You have heard what UTR teachers are asking. I'll repeat them quickly and then I want to tell you about my personal experience. Please provide twice weekly testing for classrooms with outbreaks. Weekly testing for all with an opt-out option. A qualified adult, adult in every classroom. That's educators and aides. And K ninety-fives for all. You're providing them for teachers at least at my site Coronado. But our students need them also. And don't forget the young ones. I have special ed preschoolers. I'm one of the lucky special ed teachers because I have three aides. However, one of my aides who supported another class because that class was short on aides was exposed to a positive case. She quarantined, got sick, tested positive. I've been without an aide the whole month. I've been short-staffed and I'm one of the lucky ones. Many of my preschool colleagues have been understaffed this entire year. And yet, our department keeps giving us additional students to max us out. We are overwhelmed and exhausted. Do not lose more dedicated teachers. Support the teachers.
And our last public speaker for tonight is Helen King. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Helen Kang and I'm a second grade teacher at Harding Elementary School. Two or three years ago, I addressed the board and the superintendent then about the dysfunction and of unavoidable problems that we're facing our district, including a nearly fifty million dollar deficit. Today, I address you again for the same exact issues. The dysfunction in HR, in staffing, the reluctance to increase subpay. The, you know, it's all across the district. Schools are understaffed. Our school secretary put in her notice two months ahead of time so that HR would have a heads-up in replacing her. HR just posted her job. And across the board, we are short on special education instructional aids for our most vulnerable students. In addition to that, testing, I'm sure that Michael Booker has received numerous complaints that are all the same about how the testing has been, including parents getting results for their student and their student was not even tested that day, even when I have given them their photo IDs. In addition to that, I just came off of this UTR meeting Zoom where it seemed very apparent hearing from teachers all over the district that Title One schools are having testers at their site who refuse to make an appointment for their stu, for students even when they are registered. But at other schools, testers are happy to make appointments for students. How is this inequity possible and continuing? And how is no one overseeing this? And in addition to that, the situation at stage has been atrocious for years, for years, yet it continues. Why is that? Why are our most vulnerable students being left behind? Why is no one supporting them? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I want to thank all those who gave comments and public comment. And before we proceed on, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you, President Christian. I was asked to clarify on an issue that was brought up during public comment a few times. Our board president and I have requested the superintendent to get a legal opinion on the topic of the board president election process and Dr. Hurst will be reporting on this at the next meeting during his report. So just going to clarify since it was brought up so many times. Thank you, President Christian.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy. And as we proceed on with the agenda, okay, board, we are now on to be for agenda review and adoption. The order trustees, questions and discussion items tonight as follow. We will have student trustees, trustee Leon, and we will have student trustee Flores. And then we will proceed on to the rest of the trustees would be trustee Reckler, trustee Smith Foltz, trustee Phillips, clerk Gonzalez Hoy, and myself. Dr. Hurst, on the superintendent report and on the four action items. What is your estimate of the amount of time that you will need per item?
Believe the superintendent report is a thirty-minute presentation, but then allowing for questions. So the presentation itself is about thirty minutes.
Okay, thank you. Board, I ask you to be succinct in your comments and pick one or two focus points for the evening so that we can move along at a good pace. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. In, in order previously indicate, board, are there any clarified questions on the review and adoption of the agenda? And we start off with trustee, student trustees, trustee Leon.
No questions.
Okay, trustee Flores. Okay, and then now we go to trustee Reckler.
Thank you. I have nothing.
Trustee Smith Foltz.
President Christian, can we pull C six for the clarification?
C six, okay. Okay. Thank you. Then we have trustee Phillips.
No comments, President Christian.
Okay. And we have clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you, President Christian. None for me.
And myself, none. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
President Christian, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the agenda with C six pulled.
Okay, with C six pull. Okay. And may I have a second?
Second.
All right. Are there the motion moved by Gonzalez Hoy and second by trustee Phillips? Is there a discussion? If there's no discussion, now we will move on to, to the vote and to adopt the agenda. And we start off with student trustee Leon. Yes. Yes. Student trustee Flores.
Yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foltz.
Smith Foltz, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
And myself, yes. The motion passes. And now we are on to the resolutions. B five. The resolution forty-eight, twenty-one, twenty-two, the recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. And I'd like to Mrs. Florid, trustee Flores, to do the Martin Luther King Resolution.
Give me a moment, please. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education in the West Contra Costa Unified School District recognize Monday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service and encourage all schools to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion approving B five resolution forty-eight, twenty-one, twenty-two, recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service? So move. May I have a second?
Second, President Christian.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Phillips, second by clerk Gonzalez Hoy. Okay, are there any comments?
No comment.
No comment.
All right, trustee Reckler.
I wholeheartedly support the resolution and the day of service and I would like to see that built out to be more substantial and I support it with all my heart. So thank you, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
All right, thank you. And then we had trustee Smith Foltz.
My only comment is that the resolution should come before the actual day. So if we could make sure that we're calendaring out when the resolutions are going to come so we can then have the community invested in these resolutions and we can see them acted out on our school sites. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Phillips.
No comments, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
No comment. Thank you.
And myself, no comment. Thank you. All right. Now we will move on. We'll move on to B six resolution. Okay. And we'll just take the vote of the resolution. Sorry, I'm jumping again. All right, we take the vote of the resolution. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foltz.
Smith Foltz, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez. Trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Yes, thank you.
And myself, yes. And the motion carries, it both passes. All right, now we will move on to B six resolution fifty dash twenty-one, twenty-two, recognition of Fred Kormatsu Day. And I'd like to ask Leon, trustee Leon, the reading of Fred Kormatsu Day Resolution.
Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education salute the legacy of Fred Toyosaburu Kormatsu and designate January thirtieth as Fred Kormatsu Day.
Okay, thank you. Board, once again, I'm sorry, you don't have questions, so we'll move on. We'll move to item and then move on to any comments. May I have a motion to approve B six resolution fifty dash twenty-one, twenty-two, recognition Fred Kormatsu Day?
So moved.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Phillips. And can I get a second?
Reckler, second.
Reckler, second, so. Okay, it has been moved and it's been seconded by Reckler. On to the comments. Trustee Leon.
Leon, no comment.
Trustee Flores.
No comments.
Trustee Reckler.
Yes, I have a comment. My comment is that the Japanese internment was not taught when I was in school. I would like to repeat that, that the Japanese internment was not included in any World War Two history when I was in school. And I am proud that this is being recognized and incorporated into the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have trustee Smith Foal.
Thank you so much. I want to make sure that we don't just check a box and pass this resolution, but we talk about the people who came after this resolution. We have adult ed right now, and the very people that share the same heritage as Mr. Kormatsu are unsure if they're going to have a place next year and the year after that to go and do the activities that keep them in the plant, in the land of the living. So while we pass a resolution talking about our ancestors and the ancestors that came before us, let's also take care of the people that are on the ground. I would like us to pass this resolution and also look at adult ed and having a line budget item for our older adult ed programs. Thank you, President Christian.
All right, thank you. And next we'll move to trustee Phillips.
No comments.
Thank you. Next we'll move to clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
No comments, thank you. I think our colleagues placed it really well. Thank you.
Okay, and myself, no comment. All right, and now on to the vote. And we'll have student trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Okay. Student trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Okay. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foals.
Smith Foals, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes, thank you.
And myself, yes. And the motion carries. Thank you. Now we are on to C consent items. Consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted, enacted, approved, and adopted by one motion unless a request for removal, discussion, or explanation is received.
President Christian, I would like to move our consent calendar.
Okay, can I get a second?
I will second that, sir.
Okay, it's been moved by clerk Gonzalez Hoy and is seconded by trustee Phillips. Any comments? All right, on to the vote. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Reckler, yes.
All right, thank you.
Smith Foals, yes.
Thank you.
Phillips, yes.
Thank you.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Thank you. And a yes for me. Thank you, that was quick. All right, now we are moving on to item D, superintendent communication. And Dr. Hurst, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President Christian. Before we get into the presentation, and we're going to ask if we could go ahead and bring that up. But in preparation, we wanted to introduce two of our student trustees. We're excited to have them on board. I had the opportunity to meet with them the other day, and I sat down with them and went over the agenda and really took some time to get to know them. Excited to share that Mr. Leon, Martin Leon attends middle college. He has a STEM focus, interested in attending school potentially in Southern Cal, UCLA, or UCSD. And he is really interested in advocacy and change and wants to be a change agent. And talking with Angelica Flores, she attends Richmond High School. She has a goal focus of being an attorney and really wanting to attend school here in the Bay Area at UC Berkeley. Two dynamic student trustees, we're excited to have them here with us. And I wanted to yield some time for them to share a little bit more about themselves. So we'll turn it over to our two student trustees.
Hello, as Dr. Kent Hurst mentioned, my name is Martin Leon. I am a junior from middle, college, high school. I'm also the president of Interact, the youth commission portion of San Pablo Rotary. San Pablo Rotary is an organization that participates in volunteering, donation, and community service. As president of this organization, I've been given the ability and the honor to assist many of our San Pablo and Richmond communities with food shortages and vaccination clinics. As president, I also allocate student volunteers and also adult volunteers to different facilities to manage such events. I'm looking forward to serving this board and representing my fellow students in the district. And that will conclude my comment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Angelica Flores, and I am a student at Richmond High. I'm a senior. A little bit about me is what I do in school is I'm a drum major or my high school marching man. I'm also the chairwoman of my school site council. So I have a little bit of experience, you know, trying to set up the agenda and stuff like that and in leading the meetings. And yeah, well, I'm really happy to be here and I'm really looking forward to be a student voice, to represent the student voice, and I not only want to represent them, I also want to represent the voice of my teachers, my hardworking teachers at Richmond High. Huge shout out to them. And yeah, thank you.
Again, we're so excited to have both our student trustees. And again, before we get to our presentation, I would like to introduce one more individual or set of individuals that we have here with us. Just a reminder or refresher to those listening on November the twenty-ninth of last year, we had a special board meeting. There was an agenda item there called Board Governance Audit. And on the audit, there was a recommendation to the superintendent. And that recommendation was strongly advised and actually I received direction that we find someone to serve in a role as a parliamentarian who'll be present at the board meetings to help guide the board and to rule on pertinent parliamentary issues. So I wanted to share with you, we have been looking and in search for registered parliamentarian. We do have that individual here this evening. Her name is Tamara Dunning, and I'm going to allow her to introduce herself and her colleague as well.
Thank you. My name is Tamara Dunning. I am a professional registered parliamentarian with the National Association of Parliamentarians. My partner Lorenzo Questa, also a professional registered parliamentarian with the National Association of Parliamentarians. There are extra points at the end of the day for those of you who actually can spell parliamentarian for us. We are here to help you. Any questions that you have concerning parliamentary procedure, how to make a motion, how to engage in debate? We will help you. We are very excited to be with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dunning. We appreciate that. If you can now bring up the presentation, please. Thank you, and we're going to turn this portion of the presentation over to two members of our team, Mr. Booker and Ms. Martin.
Good evening, parents, community, and board. I will be starting on a discussion on our vaccination clinics and providing an update there. Sorry, next, that's correct slide. So we hosted at the Contra Costa, we hosted at Richmond High, Hercules High, and Pinot Valley is coming up on January twenty-seventh. Mobile vaccination clinics. So Richmond High's was held on January twenty-fifth, Hercules was on the twenty-sixth, and Pinot Valley is tomorrow. We also partner with Lifelong Medical Care. They will be hosting a vaccination clinic on Saturday, and this will be at Brookside, San Pablo, free and open to everyone in the community ages five and up. So thank you for those partnerships from our county and Lifelong Medical Care. Next slide. We also have been doing a lot of work to really focus on getting more volunteers to support with getting more parents signed up for our vaccination clinics and also to support with just volunteering at our schools. So some of the things that we are doing, we have a scout and clerical meeting on Friday to support with volunteer campaign. There was a survey sent to principals to identify if support was needed for yard duty and our lent supervision. And then principals were also asked to identify volunteers that the face office can contact to attend the volunteer fingerprint party. Next slide. The fingerprint parties and QR codes are listed here. We have one at Harding Elementary on Saturday, February twelfth. This says twenty twenty-three, but this should actually say twenty twenty-two. And then we have one on Saturday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at Dejane. And the times are nine to twelve, and the QR codes are attached. I will ensure that this is published, but that the year is changed on here from our community engagement office. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, esteemed board, President Christian and Dr. Hurst. I appreciate you giving me opportunity to explain our COVID process. And I'm going to start with the slide that I used.
Sorry, President Christian, I want to work real quick. Mr. Booker, I think that you accidentally unmuted yourself on Zoom. There you go. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm going to introduce a slide that I used last week for our masking option. The most effective mask that we are, or have considered and are currently in use are the KF ninety-four's, the KN ninety-five's, and double masking with a cloth and a medical mask. The effective mask is the medical or surgical mask or what we consider three ply woven mask. And can you guys hear me now? Thank you. And the least effective mask, which we are not promoting, is the cloth mask. Staff has a masking mandate to wear the KN ninety-five's. Students have the option of KN ninety-five's, KF ninety-four's, and surgical mask. And we are providing those masks to the students on a daily basis. We are giving them the surgical mask right now, and the KN ninety-five's will be coming shortly. The KN ninety-five's are being distributed to the staff currently. Next slide, please. And before I get into the slides, I forgot to mention that we do have some representatives here tonight that will be able to assist with the Q and A. We have Dr. Savelli, who's our county public health officer. And we also have the vice president from LSA, Brad Medema. So in this slide, we talk about face coverings. Like I said, all employees are required to wear KN ninety-five face coverings while indoor and outdoors at school sites. CDPH masking exemptions apply. Students are also required to wear a mask indoors and outdoors. And they are wearing the surgical mask right now. They have the option of wearing a KN ninety-five or a KF ninety-five, which we currently don't have because of distribution, not having it available. People ask about the student face covering refusal. So just a brief summary of what that is. The teacher will direct the student to put the face covering on. The teacher will offer a safe mask break if needed outdoors. If the student continues refusal to wear a face covering, the site administrator will be notified. The site administrator should try to develop a plan with the parents to make sure that this student is abiding by our mask policy. However, schools can offer an alternative educational opportunity for students who are excluded from campus because of the face covering. Next slide, please. Our weekly COVID testing procedures, like I mentioned in the past, we have been doing weekly testing since basically the beginning of school, the school year. And that is a weekly cadence at all fifty-three of our school sites, and that is for staff and students. We are also doing weekly testing for athletes and coaches at the high school level. Employees who test positive for COVID nineteen are required to share their results with their supervisor and follow our protocols. We have also expanded our testing plan, and we provide symptomatic or response testing for staff, students, parents of WCC USD students at three testing centers. Those centers are Alvarado, the district office, and Aloney School. Those are open Monday. Those are open Monday through Friday and that is from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I want to remind everyone that we do keep all test results confidential. Next slide, please. LSA will be able to answer some of these questions in the Q and A, but I'll just go over it briefly. There is a current registration process that you have to fulfill and that's through the GVP system. You have to create a profile and once you create a profile, you put in your information as well as your healthcare information. If you don't have healthcare, you just fill out a self assertion form and you will then have a profile in the system. And once you are registered, it is a one-time deal. You do not have to register anymore and you do not have to make an appointment at a school site. So once you do it, it's done. They do have a strict security and privacy requirement for their site. Information that they give to us is given to the site leaders when needed. The COVID results notification, so when you get a result, you get a email from GVP for your test results. You then log into your profile and you get your test result from that site. As far as LSA staffing contacts, they have a questions or results email that you can use and it's results@lsalv.com. And then for general questions, they have a support line or email line and it's support@lsalv.com. As far as the community registration fair, we have looked at this and we have heard what our staff and community are saying. We are trying to get as many people registered as possible. LSA has committed to that endeavor and we're going to start that at the lowest testing schools. So we can get the registration numbers up and be able to test a lot more people. We are also doing a community registration fair and phone call campaign using our scouts and clerical staff like Ms. Martin mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. I just want to go over our contact tracing process again. I did this last week and I've done this in the past. But I just want to go over this so everybody understands what our contact tracing process is. So the site leader gathers the information and submits it into a digital document that is auto-populated into a spreadsheet that our contact tracers work from. Our contact tracing lead LBN then disseminates those cases to the tracers. The contact tracer notifies the principal after receiving the case and then starts the tracing process. Contact positive people and close contacts are contacted. And the tracer submit the info into the county spot system within a 24 hour period. Our project manager also notifies the union, our labor union partners regarding any positive case. At the end, the exposure letters are sent to the staff and students in close contact. And the positive case letters are sent to the school communities. Next slide, please. So one of the options that we are looking at is group tracing approach. This is a approach that is approved or is recommended by the CDPH and County Health. We are looking at this approach. We are finalizing our documents. But basically, I just want to give you a summary of what we currently do. We close contact trace and so that's a targeted approach. And it focuses on people that fit the close contact criteria. And that is a person that is within six feet for more than 15 minutes in a 24 hour period and that's cumulative. If a person doesn't fit that criteria, they are not contacted. So with the group tracing report or group tracing approach, we look at anybody that was exposed. So for example, if there is a classroom and there's a positive case in a classroom, everybody in that classroom is considered an exposure. At that point, everybody in that classroom would be notified. There is a testing requirement or we are having a testing requirement in order for this group to stay in the school. Now, the positive case is going to quarantine, but this this classroom will be able to stay in their classroom and continue their educational opportunities as long as they test on the fifth day. If they test negative, then they will go back to business as usual. If they choose not to test, they will have to quarantine for the standard 10 day quarantine. I think this is a better approach because not only does it lessen the strain on our contact tracers, but it gets the information out to more people that were considered exposed. Next slide, please. We've gotten a lot of questions regarding classroom closures and school closures. So this comes from the CDPH's website and I just want to read it. Temporary school closures should be considered only after conferring with local health officials. There is no specific case threshold at which the state recommends an immediate temporary closure of a classroom or school. Instead, the process should be guided by local epidemiology, which with particular attention paid to concern for in-school transmission. Operational factors may be also considered, including the ability to maintain sufficient staff, teaching staff to provide in-person instruction. So you hear this number a lot and it's the number three. The number three or more is what they consider an outbreak. Okay, and it has to be connected to the same event and that's within a two-week period. And although those three linked cases are considered an outbreak, it does not constitute an automatic classroom or school closure. The superintendent has the full authority to shut down classrooms or schools based on the outbreak severity and other mitigating factors. If the school is experiencing an outbreak, our WCCUSD COVID response team will immediately notify the county health and collaborate with testing and contact tracing if necessary. Next slide, please. So we've gotten some updates and so that's why I mentioned the the group tracing approach because it's in the current guidance. So the contact tracing and quarantine guidance that was put out on the eighth. And then there's the K-12 guidance that was put out on the 12th. We are adhering to what was put in those guidance to make sure that we are following what our county health officer is saying as well as CDPH. And with that, next slide. And with that, I conclude my presentation and I open it up for questions at this time.
And once again, Board President, as Mr. Booker has shared, we also have Dr. Savelli available here for questions from the board and also LSA.
Okay, thank you. Now, Board, are there any clarifying questions on the superintendent's report? Starting with trustee Leon.
Yes, my first question is regarding the vaccination clinic presented on slide three. Regarding the three dates of January 25th, 26th and 27th. I was asking if the board has planned a follow-up vaccination clinic for those getting their first or second dose of the vaccination.
Those vaccination clinics are for first and second doses. We have to work with the county to get another clinic for next month. So families or students that go to those clinics currently, some families may have already gotten one dose and so they can go there for their second dose or go there for their first dose. And we will partner to get another clinic next month.
Can I add one thing about vaccinations? Thank you for the invitation. Yeah, we've been a great partnership with the school district and we appreciate the invitation. And we do have mobile teams available to come back for second dose clinics. We'll be happy to do that. I also want to mention that in the Richmond auditorium, Tuesday through Saturday, 8:00 to 3:30, there is availability for anyone to get a vaccine, first, second, booster dose, free. Walk-ins are welcome. So just to let anyone know if that's more convenient for you, that's available as well.
All right, and my second question is regarding the testing sites at Deanza High School. It's directed towards the Vice President of LSA. I am a dual-enrolled student at Middle College High School and Contra Costa College, but I'm also a student athlete at my resident school, Deanza High School. So regarding the testing site at Deanza for student athletes, I'm asking if there's if there could be a reconsideration of the hours in which the testing site is open. As of now, the hours for testing end at 5:00 PM, so it's only accessible to a very little amount of students. Most athletes are on campus until 7:00 PM and possibly even eight or nine PM. So by allowing a extension of this time period, it would be a lot more accessible for student athletes to get tested. Additionally, I'm asking for a planning of a second day during the week to get tested. As of now, Mondays are the only available day in order to get tested and testing requirements are required in order for students to play. So is there a possible reconsideration for those times?
Yes, I mean, we can definitely consider that and I can I can work with Mr. Booker on the hours there. As of now, we're at each of the high schools on those Mondays from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We, if we're doing the PCR testing for the athletics, we don't want to go too much later than 5:00 PM because we do have to make the FedEx cutoff in order to get the samples to the lab in a timely manner. But we can definitely look at, you know, see if there's anything we can do to extend the hours and have that more available for you guys. If, in addition to those sites on Mondays, you know, we also have the PCR testing and antigen testing available at any of those three central sites as well. Eight to five, Monday through Friday. So if that's an option for anybody as well, any of the any of the other days during the week.
Thank you. My second question also directed towards the LSA Vice President would be regarding the scheduling system for LSA. Earlier in this meeting during the public comment, one of the parents actually mentioned that the global virus pass testing website is incredibly difficult to manage and also is very tedious. If you check right now on the Deanza student athlete testing portion, there are no available appointments for any of the days of this week. This has been an occurrence, a reoccurrence actually, multiple times during the week where students are unable to set appointments. Therefore, forcing the nurses to actually conduct the testing to set each individual student appointment upon arrival at the clinic. These delayed times for testing by hours even and sometimes students upwards of 20 plus students in one line in a very cramped room are waiting to get tested because of having to set an individual appointment for each student. So I was hoping to get that point across to the LSA IT staff and probably get a update on that system and how it directly affects students.
Yeah, I will. I will double check everything there and make sure that the testing appointments are made available when they when they should be made available on the GVP website for scheduling. You know, it's great that that students want to, you know, schedule that appointment every week. You know, it was set up with the district to not have to do that for the testing staff to be able to schedule those appointments so that it wasn't such a tedious task for for everybody to do that every single week. So that it would just had to be a one-time registration process. But to your point, I will definitely double check to make sure that, you know, these schedules are available for when they should be available for for each school on their designated testing days.
And I just want to piggyback on that is as far as the testing goes at a school site, it doesn't require that you make an appointment. Those are only for the three auxiliary sites where you have to make an appointment. So if you are at a school, it's just a matter of you going to the test area and giving you your name. So you don't have to make an appointment. You can just show up and they will test you. Now, if you're going to one of the three auxiliary sites, you will need to make an appointment.
I would like to add a follow-up question to that statement. Regarding firsthand experience, actually I've had to get a appointment each time testing at Deanza High School. I don't know if this regards my enrollment in Deanza since I'm only a student athlete, but I've been required and many other students have been required to set up an appointment in order to get tested. And I've also been to the auxiliary testing sites at the district office, which also require appointments, but this specifically pertains to Deanza High School.
Yeah.
I'm with Deanza High School to see if there's an issue there.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. They should be able to look you up, you know, and make that appointment for you no matter what school you're enrolled in at that at that time. So I'll definitely look into that further as well.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
All right, thank you. And trustee, student trustee Flores.
Yes, my first question would be in the slide that says classroom school closure consideration. I see it says if a school is experiencing an outbreak, WCCUSD COVID response team will immediately notify Contra Costa County Public Health officials. If an outbreak, do they also notify the the teachers, the parents and this like? Would they notify them also like as soon as possible? Because I know that if even with student exposures and stuff like that, they've been taking a while. And everybody already knows that, you know, who got COVID and who didn't, but nobody had gotten the notification. And a lot of students then realized like, oh my God, I was with them, you know, and they're going to school still. So I don't think it's being very quick. So how quick is it supposed to be?
So our system is depending on the dependent on the site leader giving us that information. Like I said, it's populated into a spreadsheet which our contact tracers work from. We have 13 contact tracers. They work basically seven days a week from seven in the morning to sometimes eight, nine o'clock at night. So because of the surge though, we have fallen behind and are prioritizing our cases for the onsite positive cases, which we have to report to the county within a 24 hour period. But if there are multiple cases on the site, the the site leader is aware of that because they're the ones that are giving us the information.
Thank you. Another question would be who are who are the site leaders?
Principal and administrative staff.
Okay. Thank you. Also, my last question would be how does close contact and you know, the contact tracing? how does close contact and, you know, the contact tracing, how would that work, especially like since I know a lot of students are crammed up in hallways, bathrooms, in bathrooms, a lot of people don't wear their mask and stuff like that, especially when they're hanging out with their friends and, and stuff. So a lot of, I feel like a lot of kids are being exposed and when, and they don't even know that person. So they don't have any way to know that they have been exposed to the people that have been infected. So how, how effective do you think this is?
So in order to be a close contact, there's a criteria and that criteria is within six feet for fifteen minutes or more within a 24 hour period. So you would have to fulfill that requirement to be a close contact. If we go to group tracing, then everyone that is around that person for fifteen minutes would be considered a exposure case. If, if that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And now we'll move to trustee Reckler.
Point of order, President Christian, approximately how many questions per person?
Five questions.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to all who are joining us via Zoom. It's nice to see you. Would, would you be able to tell me whether the vaccination clinics are just for one and two shots or do they also include boosters?
I am not sure if they include boosters trustee Reckler. So I will get back to you and get an answer on that.
Yes, if you could please find out, that would be really great.
Thank you.
Next question.
Doctor, I'm sorry, trustee Reckler, Dr. Savelli may be able to answer that. He, he's on.
Even better. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the county vaccination teams will do any of the doses, first, second, or booster dose.
Okay, thank you. Next question is around onboarding volunteers and building out a volunteer cadre. Do you have any specific timelines around that?
Well, the first meeting with the scows and the clerical is Friday. So they are figuring out the best plan to get more volunteers. We currently have a large bank of volunteers that have already done the fingerprinting. So when they're doing the two fingerprint parties, those are in February and March. They did a survey of principals to see which principals actually want volunteers or need volunteers. And from that list, Martine and her department will actually be meeting with principals and seeing if they can match volunteers to schools. So I would say within the next week or so, we should have some progress with the volunteer process.
Okay, thank you.
To be known, is it wearing a three ply face covering mask or a K and ninety-five as soon as they're available and provided? That would be sufficient.
And then how are masks distributed? What is the process by which a student is IDed for needing a mask or?
So we left the distribution up to the site administration. Although the sites I've spoken to today have described a process where they're verifying students that come on campus are wearing the proper mask. If they're not, a mask is distributed as they arrive on campus. Teachers have been distributed masks in their classrooms. And there's students that, that is not masked properly and they're provided with the correct mask. And the offices are providing, providing masks upon request.
Okay, thank you. And finally, we did have a backlog where the wheels came off the bus on the contact tracing. First, do we feel that we're restored? And second, has the county helped us? Or where are we in the restoring order and trust the contact tracing process?
So, you know, full transparency, we still are behind. We have hired two additional nurses from Maxim to help us with that. They're being onboarded this week. We have reached out to the county and they are helping us with getting additional nurses from the Public Health Institute. So that is coming shortly. We just have to make sure that we fulfill the paperwork requirement. So we should, if realistically looking at the county, sometime next week, we should have a definitive answer on when they will be onboarded. The, the good thing about the county contact tracer, they have previous experience. So it's just a matter of working within our system.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I wanted to add to that two relevant items. One is that the county public health rules are changing to make the reporting a little less onerous. So they'll need to report outbreaks more than just every contact. The other thing, probably the thing that will make the biggest difference is that we're, we're past our peak. So the peak number of cases in Contra Costa County happened on January ninth. And it's been going down relatively steeply ever since. We're still got a lot of COVID out there and a lot of transmission in the community. And the school cases will largely mirror the community rate, but it is getting better every week. So hopefully that should improve the situation over time.
President Christian, may I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead. Trustee Spiffo.
Thank you. Do all volunteers have to be fully vaccinated and boosted?
Yes.
Will the testing, thank you, Mr. Booker. Will the testing sites be open during the week that we're off in February and April? And I'm talking about the three additional testing sites at Alvarado, Aloney and the district.
We are looking at the, the three sites that we currently have open and seeing the feasibility of, of keeping those open and while we're, we're in the break. But we do have a plan for, before coming back to the break. We will have those sites open prior to, as well as three, maybe four additional sites that will be able to service and they're strategically placed. So they'll be able to service all our communities. And those will be open basically all day for PCR and our, our antigen testing.
Thank you for that. If someone has a bad experience or not the best experience with one of the people who are doing the testing, who do they contact? At Hercules High School, Hercules Middle School, we have fantastic testers. They're really nice and cordial and they, you know, kind of know everybody that goes in there. Test, I test weekly and we have conversations. But if you don't have a good experience with someone who is doing the testing, who do you contact?
You would contact me and, and I would talk with Brad about that situation. And if it didn't rectify itself, we would make the adjustment.
Thank you for that, Mr. Booker. And then what are the lowest three elementary schools with testing and the lowest middle and the lowest high school with numbers? They have the lowest number of students testing.
I have the list and I can give you that list through the superintendent, but I don't have it in front of me right now.
Thank you, Mr.
I can't get you that list though.
Thank you. And then we, there was a slide that talked about the classroom tracing. And forgive me if I'm not wording it exactly right, but the classroom tracing. With group tracing, with the group tracing, are we then saying that we need to eliminate mingling of classes? For example, if you have one student who is tested positive in that class and then now that class has to fall under the group tracing, correct? But it, that's correct. Okay. And then are we preventing that class from then mingling with another class? Like on the recess yard at the, in the lunchroom during any kind of outdoor activities? Or is that class now with that exposed case, are they now still allowed to mingle with other classes?
The long short of it is no, but Dr. Savelli maybe can give a more detailed response.
No, the, the, thank you for that, Mr. Booker. The, the class is not prevented from mingling. The ideas with the students masking properly, that the risk remains relatively low. So what it, what it, basically the strategy for the group tracing is to shift from, you know, a lot of individual contact tracing and do a lot more testing. So, you know, basically that classroom would then need to test a day five after the exposure. All of them would be, would be required to test. But there'll be less of the, of a burden of contact tracing. Which kid was that? Did they have their mask off? How close were they? Because that all takes a lot of investigator time. So, and so the, the state has said you can basically transform that into a more testing intensive strategy.
Thank you for that. And I guess my, my follow-up to that is yes, that classroom is tested on day five, but what about the classrooms that they mingle with? I guess that's where I'm looking for. So those classrooms that they mingle with are not tested unless they have someone who then has an outbreak. And then now that classroom has to be tested. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you. Next we'll go to trustee Phillips.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you for the informative presentation, sir.
All right, thank you. Next we go to clerk Giselle.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have four hopefully quick questions. My first one is for Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, we are hearing a lot of need about staff, staffing right now. What are we doing for schools where we have a lot of staff who are having to isolate or quarantine? How are we supporting schools that have a large need when it comes to staffing?
I shared this at the last board meeting as well. We still have the practice as a central office of meeting every evening and in the morning and developing a list of where our neediest sites are and dispatching as many personnel from the central office down to school sites to support those school sites. So that's the strategy that we're still maintaining and meeting on an everyday basis to support the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. My next question is for Ms. Martin or Mr. Booker. How are we supporting non-English speakers to sign up for testing?
So we are, I don't know if you remember this previously, LSA did a number of Zoom sessions where it was bilingual. And we are going to do the same thing with our community fairs, which will be in person. We will have somebody that can translate to help with the registration process. Brad, did you want to?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please, go ahead. Sorry, interrupt you.
Brad, did you want to speak on that?
Yeah, no, just basically seconding what, what Mr. Booker said there. So, you know, we'll, we'll do these Zoom sessions, you know, a few days a week, a few evenings a week where people can join in and we'll have a translator on there while we do kind of a just quick walkthrough of how to register. And then, you know, we're working with, with Mr. Booker to set up these community registration sites where people can come in person and we'll have folks there to, to be able to help them out in person to get them registered as well.
And also we'll have our scows and clerical who also will be bilingual to assist with that effort.
Great, thank you both. My next question is for Mr. Miad, Miad Emma. I apologize. Please correct me if I said your last name wrong. Your first name is much easier, Brad.
Go with that, that's fine.
We were getting some complaints in the last few weeks about our three sites that are open to the community that the testing results were getting to them really late, like five, six days later. Have we corrected that issue?
Yes, that, that should be corrected. I, I, I found what the issue was with the results coming back from the labs system and translating back to GVP. And I, I think that's where the lag was. With that being said, you know, when results do get put into GVP, they receive an email notification that a result is ready. At the same time though, when a result is completed by the lab in the labs system, they should also be receiving an email notification from LSA notifying them that their result is ready with information on how to access the result through the, through the patient portal for the laboratory. So the, the results technically weren't, weren't delayed that by five, six days. It's just there was an issue with them getting back into GVP, which we have since corrected.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And my last question is for either Mr. Booker or Mr. Savelli. Thank you for being here, Mr. Savelli, Dr. Savelli, I apologize. My question is on, on the definition of an outbreak according to the guidelines. So is the finest three or more cases connected to the same event within two week period? So does that mean that if a, a student tests positive at school, one student, and then in the next week or two weeks, more students do not go to school and the teacher's notified that is because their kids tested positive? Is that considered an outbreak or does it have to be students tested at the site as an outbreak? Does that make sense? I can maybe give an example. Okay.
Yeah, it's, I can take that, Mr. Booker. That, that's a, it's a, the, the technical term that we use is epidemiologically linked. So can you link those three cases? Are they all in the same class? Did they all go on the same field trip? Are they all on the same sports team? Did they see each other outside of school? Like, did they all hang out and do video games for fifteen minutes? They all end up positive, but they end up in the, in the same classroom also. Then that's still a, a linked outbreak, even though it didn't happen at the, through school transmission, but they're linked to each other. So that's really the definition of what an outbreak is, is are they, are they linked epidemiologically? Meaning we can connect them somehow during that period.
So, and thank you so much, Dr. Savelli. So a follow-up and this is my fifth last question. So, so in the case that, that occurs and, you know, our nurses are not being notified by the parent that their kid tested positive at home and, but they're notifying the teacher, should then the teacher be notifying somebody? Because I've heard this happen many times. I can tell you my wife's classroom, it happened. She had a positive case. The next two weeks she had about twelve students who were out because of sickness. But that was obviously not reported to anyone, right? Because the parents are just keeping the kids home. So in this case, who should be contacted? And is there a way that, Mr. Booker, we could share this with the people? Teacher especially, right? And parents who are experiencing this so that we can try to solve that issue? That it's really no one's fault because it's not a process that has been really shared, right? So, so who, who should teachers and parents be notifying if their kid tests positive at home and they were at school? Sorry, I'll pass back to you, Mr. Booker.
So the, the teacher, if they find out that information, they should let their, your site leader know. Because if we don't have the information, we don't have the information. So if they're letting the site leader know, the site leader has the responsibility of getting that information into our system. And then once it's in our system, we make the necessary contact tracing efforts for, for that situation. If we see that there's linkage, then we contact the county and we work with their county response team. And they have a, a response team that's run by a manager. And they will work with us on, you know, what is, you know, whether it's resources or, you know, looking at the options of the classroom and our students. So they just need to make sure that they contact the, the site leader.
Thank you so much, Mr. Booker. I, I know we're not in concert, I did want to say that, I do think that we need to clarify that with staff. Because that notification. Because that notification is not occurring, not to the fault of teachers. Or you guys either, but thank you so much. And thank you for the presentation. Back to you, President Christian.
Okay, thank you. Uh, clerk Gonzalez Hoi, and I don't have any questions. With now we'll move into the comment. Uh, trustee Leon.
No comment.
Trustee Flores.
I just really do hope that, um, the app, the GVP app is easier for everyone. And that would, and hopefully that would encourage many more people to get tested. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now we go to trustee Regler.
Thank you. Thank you. I do have a couple of random things. The first one is, is to please promote that the clinics do boosters as well as doses one and two. I think that's really important. The second thing on GVP and this discussion about appointments. You don't need an appointment, but what my own kid tells me is that if, if you make an appointment, they can jump the line. Or their process faster, the information is available or something. But I'm constantly asked to make an appointment for her because it moves her through. So you should be aware of that. In the language that the district uses, I would really love for you to start saying. That with the vaccine cards that people have not proved their vaccination. Or they have not uploaded proof of vaccination or vaccination status. Or something like that, because I've seen it in the press that we have a low vaccination rate and that does not match the county's number. I mean, I can't prove that we're not a black hole or a dark hole in vaccination status. But it doesn't jive with the rest of the county. So I think we should be a little clearer about that. And then. I hope that you will work with principals and scouts on these registration fairs. I think it might be better to do it site specific. When parents are on campus and they can come to campus and. Maybe it's during the day when they're there, they're dropping off. I mean, I've had some success on testing day. With parents dropping off and you can grab them in front of the school and be like, hey, we're testing today. Can we get you to fill out these forms? So that might be a better way to target populations. And then, you know, signing people up once again is a lot easier with the app. I didn't even know there was an app. But the app is actually pretty good. Um, so that should be promoted as well. And that is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Regler. And next we have trustee Smith Foh.
I believe by not setting clear policy board, we are allowing and using vagueness and untraceable accountability. To sell the community the feelings of protection and transparency. We must do better.
Thank you. And next we have trustee Phillips.
Um, I want to say two things. Um. The first thing that I want to say is that this may seem random, but it's not. My children take multivitamins every day. Because I think that they are extremely important and I do think that they help, uh, keep children safe. My wife and I take multivitamins as well. But my wife and I are fully vaccinated. My wife just got her booster. Um, and my children, although they're not fully vaccinated, everyone who is eligible to get shots. Have gotten their first shot and they're just waiting a little bit of time so they can get their second shot. So. You all know I have four kids. Uh, three of them are old enough, um, right now to get vaccinated. And those three have gotten their first shot. So I want to encourage families, um, and they will be getting their second shot very soon. I want to encourage families to, yes, uh, give their children multivitamins, but to also, uh, get their, uh, children vaccinated if they are eligible. That is what my family is doing. Um, my wife has spent a lot of time researching this. And she has come to the conclusion and I trust her with my life literally. That this is what's best, uh, for us. So we're not just telling you to do something. We're asking you to do something that we're also doing for our families. Individually. So, uh, that's the, the, the first thing that I want to say. The second thing that I want to say is. Nothing in life is perfect. Sometimes we get really close to it. Sometimes we may hit perfection for a moment. And then it wavers a bit because in general, nothing in life is, is perfect. And this is an extremely trying time that we're in right now. And while I would be the first one to admit that everything in this district is not perfect. Uh, I will also be the first one to admit that our staff is trying extremely hard. And that there are things that they are doing. Quite frankly, just about as close as you can get to perfect, uh, in the situation that we are operating in. So what I would like people to do. Is to be fair. Is to be fair. Is to be fair. We have a federal government. We have a state government. We have world governmental agencies who are struggling. With these very issues that we are grappling with, uh, every day in this district. State agencies, federal agencies, world agencies, world bodies grappling with these issues. And we're beating up local school boards because they're not getting it right every time. So I'm not going to ask for grace because people may interpret that differently. I'm going to ask you to be fair. A hundred years from now, we may be in this situation again. We were in this situation a hundred years ago. This is unprecedented. And every time we believe that we've got one thing like something else pops up. And that's the nature of what we are dealing with. This is an extremely flexible and fluid situation. So I want to thank Dr. Hurst. I want to thank Mr. Booker. I want to thank our site leaders. I also want to thank the people who are working in our sites every day. It's not perfect. And it wasn't perfect before this virus started. And it won't be perfect when it's over. And we know that. So let's just not spend our time beating on each other. Let's be fair. Let's follow the golden rule. And let's do unto others as we want them to do unto us. Those are my comments on this section of the report, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next we'll go to clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Christian. Yeah, I have a couple of things. Uh, one, um, I would, uh, recommend, uh, Dr. Hurst that we look at the district's website FAQ. And we update it as soon as possible to follow the new guidelines which change weekly. So I know it's hard to, to go back and change it every time, but, uh, but some of it is outdated. So that would be my first recommendation. Next, um, you know, I was talking about outbreaks. Uh, I do hear from the sites, there's a lot of confusion about that. Mr. Booker and Dr. Hurst, if we could definitely send some clarification. To everybody, all employees just around reporting of COVID cases and how that works and who they need to report. To and why the administration does. Uh, everybody's pretty overwhelmed and I think that if we can just send clarification, that will really be helpful. Next, uh, you know, I agree with all my colleagues. I will say that, you know, as you all know, both my parents, um, have COVID at the moment. And I don't believe that what's saving their life is drinking orange juice or taking vitamins. I believe what's saving their, their life is that they are vaccinated and that they are boosted. My mom suffers of MS. She suffers of other, uh, issues. I really, really believe that if she wasn't vaccinated, she'd be in a worse place than she is today. So I am incredibly thankful for the work that our county, our state, our federal government has done of vaccinations. I encourage everybody to get vaccinated. Um, don't believe. Everything you hear by taking vitamins, you're going to prevent COVID. That is not true. Get vaccinated. That is the biggest thing you can get, do. To prevent this virus from continuing to get spread in our community and for you to be in a worse place if you were to get it. And the last thing I say is, you know, I think that, uh, we have to continue to listen to what. Our teachers, our classified staff, our administrators at the schools are going through. I agree, we're not going to do everything perfect. I think that we're doing some things well, but they are the ones experiencing every day. What it is to be in the classroom, uh, with students, what it is to be supporting families every day to get registered, to get tested. And, and the reality is that we are not. We might be supporting, we might be visiting schools, but we're not doing that all day, every day. In our lives. So in my opinion, we got to continue to listen, work in collaboration with our unions. Listen to families and pivot every time. Uh, sometimes the feedback can be hard to hear. We've all heard it, sometimes directed at us, but that is what we're supposed to do. We are supposed to hear things. Even if they're uncomfortable and pivot. Uh, so I want to thank everybody for continuing to. Be at our schools, continue to support our students, our students for continuing to go in and learning under these circumstances. That it's no one's fault, uh, and our staff for continuing to work day and night to make sure that they are safe. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, President Christian.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, clerk Gonzalez Hoi. And the comment I just basically have is, you know, is, you know, based on, it's the communication, you know, get the information out. You know, sort of public, everybody will get the information of clarity of the direction and everything, how everything should, you know, is going. So I'd say we should have good, strong communication and whatever we do is to make sure that we stay connected. All right. Thank you. All right. Okay, board. We are now moving on to the action item.
Was Dr. Hurst gonna, um, say something about the president thing? Next meeting. Oh, I was, I was waiting for that one. Okay, I'm done.
Yes, I was going to come back and, uh, bring that to, uh, the board and then publish it to the public.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay, board. Now we are, um. Going on to action, the, the action item. And for the first two is E1. And, uh, E2. And E1 is the increase, the budget. For Shannon Elementary School and Clinical Needs, uh, the multi-purpose room project. Is there? A presentation, anything on that or?
Yes, we actually have Lewis's, uh, Mr. Freeze, I'm sorry, is going to be speaking on a couple of the action items. I did share something with the board early on as well, just to explain this, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Freeze.
Yes, good evening. So, uh, tonight we're bringing back the Shannon and Hercules's. Item for increasing their budgets. Um, at the last board meeting, this item. Was discussed as possibly being to be reconsidered. We believe this is a new item and we're bringing that forward as such tonight. There is a presentation, I've included that it just says backup. If there's no questions and you'd like us to proceed. Uh, the request tonight is to increase the project, increase the project budget for Shannon Elementary School Critical Needs Project. The current approved project budget is $7.1 million. We're requesting tonight that we increase the budget by $2.2 million. Which would bring the total budget to $9.2 million. I'm sorry, bring the budget to $9.3 million. If there's any questions, I will try to answer your questions on this tonight.
Okay. All right. And. Are there any questions? Start with trustee Leon.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. And trustee Flores.
No questions.
All right, thank you. And we go trustee Regler.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, and go to trustees before.
Just one question for clarification. Are we take, uh, Mr. Freeze, are we taking these separately or together? One and two?
Uh, I believe that would be a question for the board president, but currently we, we have brought up, uh, E1.
So, okay, uh, president Christian, are we going one and then going two? So we're just talking about one right now, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. No questions.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, we'll go to, um, trustee Phillips.
I do not have any questions, President Christian. I do not have any questions, President Christian.
Okay, thank you. All right, clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Okay, and myself, I have nothing. And so.
President Christian, I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Second that.
All right, it's been moved, uh, by clerk Gonzalez Hoi and second by trustee Smith Foh. And. Comment. Uh, Leon, uh, trustee Leo.
No comments.
Thank you. Trustee Flores.
No comments.
Thank you. Trustee Regler.
No comments. I supported the project in June and I support it now. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Smith Foh.
Thank you. I support this project. We have a clear number and we're able to make a intelligent and informed decision. I stand with Shannon and I support this project. Thank you. I hope everyone votes yes.
All right, thank you. And then we got trustee Phillips.
I don't have any comments.
All right, thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you. I don't have any comments.
Thank you. And myself, no comment. And on to the vote, uh, trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Regler.
Regler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foh.
Smith Foh, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes, sir, I do.
All right.
Gonzalez, so yes.
And I am a yes as well. And the motion carries it past. It passes.
All right. For I to me to, we're requesting that we increase the project budget for Hercules Middle High School. Critical Needs Project, uh, for a new science building with eight classrooms. Uh, we're increasing, asking for an increase of $5 million. The current budget is $14.7 million with a $5 million increase to bring their project budget to $19.7 million. In addition to increasing the project budget, we're asking that the board approve an amendment to the architect's contract. Uh, the amendment would be for $49,000. Would increase their contract from $757,000 to $806,050.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, board, uh, it's, yeah, clarify. Clarify a question for you two. Okay.
President Christian, without objection, I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I second that.
It's been moved by clerk Gonzalez Hoi, second by Smith Foh, trustee Smith Foh. And. And. Discussion comment. Trustee Leon?
No comments.
Trustee Flores?
No comment.
Trustee Recker?
I supported the project in June and I support it now, thank you.
Trustee Smith Foe?
I fully support this, thank you.
Trustee Phillips?
I can't help myself. This is the same thing we voted on before, and I do think we should have a motion for reconsideration, but I am supporting this under the leadership of my president, O three Christian.
All right, thank you. Trustee, me clerk Gazalas Hoy?
Thank you, no comments.
And myself, I have no comment. And on to the vote, trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
Uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
Uh, trustee Smith Foe?
Smith Foe, yes.
Uh, trustee Philip?
Yes.
Uh, clerk Gazalas Hoy?
Gonzalez, so yes.
And myself, yes. And the motion carries and it passed. Okay. Now we are moving on to E3.
Yes, tonight we bring forward before you the extension of contract or renewal contract for our area wide, our WAN wide area network. This is a five-year extension contract with Conterra. Conterra has been our service provider since 2014. Their their contract has been extended originally for five years with two one-year extensions. So we're bringing this back for the board tonight to extend their contract for additional five years. Our IT department has been successful and also renegotiated rate decreased from our current fees we're paying. That savings. I'm sorry, equates to about $349 a month per site, and I don't have that grant toll, but it is a net savings overall. So we're recommending approval of the extension of contract for Conterra.
Okay. All right, okay, board, we are now on to clarifying questions. Uh, trustee Leon?
No questions.
Uh, trustee Flores?
No questions.
Uh, trustee Recker?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Uh, trustee Smith Foe?
No questions.
Okay, trustee Phillips?
I do not have any questions, good sir.
All right, thank you. Trustee Clerk Gazalas Hoy?
No questions, thank you.
All right, and I have none. And now may I have a motion, a motion to approve?
So move, sir.
All right. Thank you, and second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by trustee Phillips, second by clerk Gazalas Hoy. And now on to. Now on to the comments. Trustee Leon?
No comments.
Uh, trustee Flores?
No comment.
Uh, trustee Recker?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Uh, trustee Smith Foe?
No comments.
Uh, trustee Phillips?
You're doing a great job chairing this meeting, that is my only comment, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, trust clerk Gazalas Hoy?
No comments, thank you.
All right, thank you. And myself, no comments. Now to the vote, trustee Leon?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
Uh, trustee Smith Foe?
Smith Foe, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes, sir.
Uh, trustee Clerk Gazalas Hoy?
Gonzalez, so yes, thank you.
And my, and myself, yes. And the motion carries, we're all voting yes. Thank you. Now we are on to E4. Appointment of membership for district facilities. Dr. Hurst, this item is yours.
And so we have Dr. McIntyre and I believe also Mr. Freeze will weigh in as well.
I'm not presently a panelist on the meeting yet. There we go. There we go. Okay, board president trustees, it's an honor to be for you tonight to talk about the appointment of the membership for the 7-Eleven Committee. The process by which we we put together this committee i- is really important because we really strived to put together a recommendation for a panel for the 7-Eleven Committee that balanced a lot of different competing priorities. And putting together a community panel, some of the things that we were looking at were the five stakeholder groups set out in law that were required to have. And so those are, for example, like property owners, teachers, administrators, people with expertise in the area that we're working on. In those types of criteria. And then we were also trying to balance geographically within the trustee districts and also by gender. While trying to keep a focus on the expertise of the general members. So you'll see in in the list of applicants, the 29 applicants, we evaluated each one of the applications based on which areas or which stakeholder groups they felt they represented in their application. So you'll see in the in the master grid that in the master grid, you'll see that it's several stakeholders have, for example, they were a landowner, they were an administrator, and they had an expertise in in real estate or in property law or in transactional work or even assessed value of property or property use. And so to the extent we could, when we were filling one criteria that wasn't expertise, we were looking for somebody who also had expertise in in doing so. And and so going through a process where we evaluated that solely based on the paperwork, we don't know the applicants. Mr. Freeze and I, neither of us know the applicant, so we we evaluated the applications based on the merit of what was submitted only. And then attempted to balance those three criterias, a stakeholder group, the gender balance and the geographic balance. Now, within that, we have to note that we only had one application from trustee area number one. And so that made a true balance by trustee area tougher. And and we did have a last minute, one of the people who was proposed on this item, Andrea Holly has stepped aside. And so we have, we're propose, there's, there's a backup. The Trey Holland is the backup that we're recommending as the replacement for that position. So if if there was a decision to move forward with the panel, I've provided whichever board member would would move the item to move the item with that change if they're so inclined.
Okay, thank you. Board, we are now on to clarifying questions. And we'll start off with trustee Leon?
No clarifying questions.
Okay, trustee Flores?
No questions.
Thank you. Next, we have trustee Recker?
Thank you, I do have a couple of questions. The first one is, is we did get a call asking to clarify which properties the 7-Eleven Committee is looking at. So if you would be able to clarify what you're looking at and for lack of a better word, is there ever scope creep? Or do you look at other things while you're in the process of the investigation?
So the four properties that were identified were the Portola Upper Site, Seaview Property, Harmonol's Property and the Adams Property. Regarding scope creep, when this project was originally put forward, the the trustees were conclusive in their statement that we were not to consider properties that currently have students on them. And so we're only going to be engaging around these four particular sites.
Okay, thank you. Would you be able to explain more what kind of expertise you're looking for or is required for a successful 7-Eleven Committee vetting?
So some of the expertise that we saw within the applicants that were selected had to do with around land usage or assessor evaluation, for example, or environmental impact of different project types. I think one of the people who is on the list even has, one works as an assessor, one has been a project developer, land developer. So they have kind of full scope experience in the process. So those were the, we're looking for very specific toward establishing the highest and best use for these four properties. So that way the board can consider and weigh as many factors as possible when the properties are brought forward.
And what do you expect the options or what will the 7-Eleven Committee discuss and what what will they bring back to the board?
Within the scope, the the kind of legal realm of possibility for for the use of the the four properties, you you have the very traditional lease option. So somebody could lease the property for an extended period of time, a long-term lease. You have the traditional sell, there are rules around the use of funds if you sell a property. Or you have what's called a swap, where you exchange this property for another property. Typically, when a swap is done, the idea is that you would swap the existing site for another property that that is already income generating. Or that you need that other property to build a school, for example. So that's not really the case or the the objective of these four properties. But th- those are the three types of transactions that are legally possible. If the board wants to narrow that scope for the committee or either now or in the future, based on the recommendations, that is your right to do so.
Is the board required to select an option provided by the 7-Eleven Committee?
The 7-Eleven Committee is purely advisory.
And finally, what's the timeline that you're now working on?
Well, now we'll work with the with this, the members as seated if approved by the 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 board to establish a schedule that suits their needs because we need at least seven of them to show up for each of the meetings. This is typically a three to four meeting process that we run people through the, it's it's fairly involved as far as what the realm of possibilities and the legal compliance requirements are. So that's the whole first meeting. And then we we really dig in and roll up our sleeves, digging through data and and helping the committee through a data-driven process. So they can often solicit more data before they make their recommendations on each property. And then we would bring that recommendation in the form of a report back for for the board's consideration and direction.
So like March, do you think, or April, spring, or what's the?
I I would say it's safer to say, you know, into the summer, maybe even early fall. It depends on the availability of the of the the committee members and how quickly we can schedule them through the process. We we have all the data we need on our end, so it's not a lot of extra work per se to put that together. But we we do need to, you know, meet the committee at their availability. So if they can move quickly, we'll attempt to do so within their, the confines of their commitment and volunteerism.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, we have trustee Smith Foe?
You may have already spoke to this, but these meetings are public meetings, correct?
Uh, this is a 7-Eleven Board Committee, so we have to follow the Brown Act.
So you're following the Brown Act, so it's a public meeting that's going to be, it has to be agendaized, it has to have all, you already talked about the quorum that it has to have. So it is for the public consumption, these meetings, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Thank you. And next we have clerk Gazalas Hoy. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping again. Trustee Phillips?
It's okay, sir, we can be flexible here. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. Now.
Thank you, President Christian. Trustee Recker asked my question, so I don't have anything else, thank you.
Thank you, and I don't have any questions. And so.
President Christian, I would like to move to approve the the appointments for the 7-Eleven Committee as presented with the following change. Trey Holland will replace Andrea Holly as the teacher representative, as Mr. McIntyre explained.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by clerk Gazalas Hoy, second by trustee Phillips. And on to comment, starting with Leon?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. And. All right, we'll go to trustee, trustee Recker?
So I'd like to thank everybody who applied and I'd like to thank all of you that are going to serve, especially those of you from trustee area five. I think I know all of you and there really couldn't have been more qualified or passionate or dedicated applicants that signed up. Thank you, thank you. And I support the district's recommendation and we're getting organized. Let's get this going, we're behind, thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Smith Foe?
Mr. McIntyre, did you tell us who, Mr. Trey, what area he's from?
So within the exhibit, this Trey Holland is is in District Five. So what we tried to do is provide a grid with all 29 applicants that included which categories they they stated they that they they met and the trustee area they they're representing or they live in. And so we tried, we did try to work toward balance, but there were not a lot of teacher options within the group. And and Mr. Holland is is eminently qualified, as was the prior candidate who withdrew.
So I believe, I'm sure he's qualified. And my only concern is that on your grid, you have no one from Area One. Area One does cover, unless I'm missing it, Area One does cover Hercules, Pinole and the Mount Talvent area of Richmond. So I am concerned that there's no representation from Area One. That's my only comment, thank you.
So that was a comment for the for for this process, the one person we had from Area One was the person who withdrew.
Yes, sir, I I realize that I'm just, it's, it hasn't been replaced by anyone in Area One. And again, thank you, Mr. Trey, for jumping in, but it does present a concern for me that there's no one representing Area One in the 7-Eleven Committee. That's all.
All right, thank you. And next, we have trustee Phillips?
I'm very happy that this is happening this evening. This was presented to the prior board that was well over a year ago. And the board shot it now. I asked them to do it, staff asked them to do it, and they shot it down. And I'm just so glad to be on a board with people who have the vision and foresight and the gumption to act when they know that we need to act. And I'm glad that we have a staff that did not give up. I know I see some new folks, but they kept pushing. And when there's a good decision to be made that they're willing to stand on it, this district is running on financial fumes. We have some corrections that we need to make, and this is a big step towards getting our fiscal house where it needs to be. I want to thank everybody who has worked very diligently despite ob- obstacles to put this thing together. And I want to thank everybody who has volunteered to serve. You are doing a great service to this district and you are doing a great service to this community. And anything else that we can do within reason to. And anything else that we can do within reason to balance our books and to get additional income into this district, we should do. Because all of the things that everybody wants, they're not free. They're not free. And we, to my knowledge, don't have credit cards with lines of credit big enough to pay for all of this stuff. And even if we did, we couldn't pay the credit cards off. So thank you so much to staff. Thank you so much to the volunteers. This is just, I can't be tickled pink. I'm too dark for that, but if I could be, I would be. So thank you. I'm done.
All right, thank you. And next we go to clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank all the volunteers. I want to thank staff for starting this work. I am also really excited that we're doing this. And I look forward to getting updates on how the work's doing and hearing from our volunteers. Thank you again.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez Hoi. And I move to myself. And yes, I am for it. And so, and now on to the vote. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foh.
I'm voting yes on this with the cautionary tale. Please reach out to people in Area One so their voice can be heard. If you need a list of people who you could reach out to, who are willing to give you a piece of their mind, their opinion, I have that list ready for you. Smith Foh, yes.
All right, thank you. And we go to trustee Phillips.
One hundred fifty percent, yes.
All right, thank you. And next we go to clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And myself, yes. And a motion carries and it passed. All right, and now okay, there are no, I have listed for F, discussion item report. So we now return to the poll cassette item. And I believe it was one that was pulled was C six, C six. So trustee Smith Foh.
Thank you. I pulled this item because we got a phone call from a a member of the public. If you guys remember Public Core, I believe, and they asked a question, they wanted some clarification around C six. So if we could clarify, Mr. Freeze, I believe this may be your item. If you could clarify around the question that the caller asked, or give us more information around C six, I would appreciate it.
Yes, I believe the question was, was this a new charter school application or was it renewal of an existing application? This is a renewal of Richmond's College Prep Charter, currently located adjacent to the Neestrom School. It's a five-year extension of their charter agreement, and this is outside the Prop thirty-nine process.
Go ahead, trust.
Just another clarifying question, because I heard different things. This is not a renewal of their charter. This is this is a renewal of their facility's use agreement, correct?
That is correct, and I'm sorry if I misspoke. Yes, it is renew the facility use agreement.
I, I knew that's what you meant, but I just want to make sure that everybody else understood.
Okay, thank you. So, okay.
President Christian, I'll move to approve this item.
Okay, it's been moved by clerk Gonzalez Hoi and second, second by Phillips.
President Christian, I have a point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
I had one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. May I ask?
As well, I jumped, I also jumped the gun.
That's okay. May I ask that question?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Freeze, and I don't know if you're able to answer this for me. It's a renewal of the facility. Do you know when the charter itself comes back up for renewal or no?
I can get that information for you, but I don't have it before us tonight.
Thank you. That's all of my questions.
All right, thank you. So we go back and it's been moved by clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Second by Phillips and on to okay, on to the vote. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Thank you. And trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foh.
Without all the information that I need, Mr. Freeze, I'm going to abstain from this vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, trustee Phillips.
I vote yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, trust me clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
I vote yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. And myself, I vote yes. And one abstain, Smith Foh, and four trustees carry, trustee Reckler, trustee Phillips, clerk Gonzalez Hoi, and myself. A motion carries. Thank you. Down on to item G, which is comment from the Board of Education and future agenda items. Okay, we now up to comments from the Board of Education. And we have a short window, so each board member will have two minutes apiece to give comments. And we'll start off with trustee Leon.
No comments.
Trustee Flores.
No comment.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Yes, thank you so much. So first, I'd like to name the people that are there on the seven eleven committee, because I think we forgot, we didn't name who they were. So I'd like to thank and congratulate Trey Holland, Andrea, I'm, I'm sorry, Selena Hernandez Perez, Daniel Maria Scott, Diana Perez Cruz, Don Gosney, Doreen Chand, James Alexander Watt, Ja- James Henry Sanders, Javanti Logley, excuse me if I didn't pronounce your name correctly, Samantha Ann Torres, and Summer Siggler. So thank you and congratulations to you all. I wanted to touch on a couple of things from last week. First, I wanted to send my condolences to the Zeklin family and the Korematsu family. Mr. Zeklin passed away over the break. He was my daughter's Spanish teacher. Wonderful man, very loving, and something that he did that I'll always remember is he brought a student award night to Korematsu where he awarded, he worked with all the other teachers and he awarded awards to kids for, you know, most improved, did what funniest, made the most academic promise, was the best in something. And it was such a lovely evening, and what I always remembered about him is that he showed up completely in black tie. And I just thought, that is just so nice and so amazing to show up in your best dress to honor kids. And so I always remembered that and I appreciated it and, you know, to the Zeklin family and the Korematsu family. You know, it's, it's tough to lose people. It really hurts, and that's exactly the way it should be. So with that, the other person that I would like to acknowledge who passed away is Mike Parker from Richmond Progressive Alliance. He passed away just a week, a week or two ago, and if there was anybody that was devoted to public education, it was Mike Parker. He was public education one thousand percent. And I always appreciated his words about public education and how much it meant to him. And I will certainly miss him and his concise comments. I want to thank all our educators and our staff and our students for hanging on in these really trying times. I really appreciate you. It is very difficult now, for sure. And I appreciate you, and I'm out there every day at King, except for today. But I will be there tomorrow, and everybody stay safe, get vaccinated, get a booster shot, wear a good mask, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
And thank you, trustee Reckler. And next we have trustee Smith Foh.
Dr. Hurst, I want to make a comment about our new student trustees. We need to update the district website. And we need to figure out what we're going to do about emails, how the student trustees will be able to be emailed by the community and by students themselves, so they will be able to bring those voices to the board. We talked about this with the last group of student trustees. I just want to make sure that we are including that, especially since we're onboarding now with these students. Here's my closing comments. They are not okay. They are working and doing their job, but they are not okay. This board did not allow for or demand that we adjust our expectations of what we want, need, or require from them. They are destroying themselves, trying to make it like it was. It's impossible. They can't. They can't do it, and we are not allowing them permission to say that. Because now they are brave enough or fed up enough or out of necessity screaming out of self-preservation. That is not a commentary about them, but about us. We did not listen to the whispers and the cries. Now we must endure the ever-present screams. We did that. We backed them in a corner. We did not value them. We broke trust. They are saying no. They are saying enough. They are saying this can't be done in the way, in this way, and in this time. The them and the they are teachers, staff, students, and parents. Let me read it again. Students are not okay. Teachers are working and doing their job, but they are not okay. This board did not allow for or demand that we adjust our expectations of what we want, need, or require from staff. Teachers are destroying themselves, trying to make it like it was. It's impossible. Students can't. Students can't do it, and we are not allowing them permission to say that. Because now teachers, parents, staff, and students are brave enough or fed up enough or out of necessity screaming out of self-preservation. This is not a commentary about teachers, staff, students, and parents, but about us. We did not listen to teachers, students, staff, and parents' whispers and cries. Now we must endure their ever-present screams. We did that. We backed them into a corner. We did not value teachers, students, staff, and parents. We broke trust. The teachers, staff, students, and parents are saying no. The teachers, staff, students, and parents are saying enough. The teachers, staff, students, and parents are saying this cannot be done this way and in this time. Board, start listening. I am complete.
All right, thank you. Thank you, trustee Smith Foh. And next we have trustee Phillips.
I feel like national political tactics have made it to the school board. I appreciate everyone calling in or dialing in or signing in for public comment. But a large part of what I hear in public comment is misinformation about the virus, misinformation about vaccines, misinformation about possible treatments, and misinformation about who the president is. Misinformation about mandates, misinformation about masks. And when I say that I feel like national politics are creeping into the school board, that's not that difficult to understand what I mean. Because at the federal level, we hear complaints and misinformation about the virus. And we hear complaints and misinformation about the president. Joe Biden is the president of the United States, and Othury Christian is the president of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Governing Board. And no matter how we try to recreate history, Joe Biden will continue to be the president, and Othury Christian will continue to be the president of this board. I too look forward to some kind of communication from the lawyers to stop this nonsense, because it's nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we go to clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Christian. I first wanted to welcome our new student trustees, trustee Leon and trustee Flores. I am so thankful you're both here. I first want to say your voices are the most, the two most important voices in this building, in this meeting. So I really look forward to hearing what you have to say at every meeting moving forward. I think that you have obviously big shoes to fill, but you will catch on right away. You're already doing incredible. And, and remember that always be courageous. I already can tell you all, you both will be, but you do represent thirty thousand voices. And, and, and again, your voices is what should advise us on how to do things on the board level. So really thankful you both decided to do this. Please lean on the superintendent, on us. If you ever have questions, any of us are always welcome to and happy to support. I also wanted to thank trustee Reckler for bringing up Mr. Parker. I was incredibly saddened to hear about his passing. I had just spoken to him a few weeks ago. And he was an incredible human being. So, you know, my thoughts and prayers go to his family as well. He was incredibly invested in West Contra Costa. And I just wanted to end by thanking everybody. You know, we, we sit up here in these positions. At the end of the day, the next day, we're not going to the classroom, we're not going to the sites to clean. I think that everybody, the work that they're doing at the schools is incredible. I think that everything you're all doing to try to keep a sense of normacy to our students is incredible work. I think that the, the work that is happening in our central office is such important work. And so I just want to thank everybody. I think that pushback is healthy. I think that we have to continue to listen and partner. I think that what we're hearing in public comment and when the emails that we're getting from teachers and classified and site administrators is healthy, and I think that we got to respond to those needs. Because I don't believe that they are providing misinformation. I believe it's the reality that they live in at the sites. And to me, that's why their voice is so critical and so important, of course, our students as well. So continue to share those thoughts with us. We will continue to push, and I'm talking about staff up here and our board. Because our whole purpose is to ensure that things are going well at the sites and in the classroom. So actually, I, I'm really thankful for the pushback, because that tells me we can always do more, and we should always do more to ensure people's safety and our students' safety. So I want to thank everybody who continues to push us and continues to support us and continues to, to do this important work, including Dr. Hurst and your staff, so important as well. So thank you so much, everybody. And back to you, President Christian.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez Hoi. And I just want to close out by saying a few words of encouraging everybody to keep moving forward, that we all continue to strive together and through challenges, through a lot of things that we have to keep in mind that we, it's about our kids, it's about our students, and making sure the safety of our students and staff in this district and making sure that we listen and that we stay in tune and touch and that we keep our ears to the ground and, and listen. and that we keep our ears to the ground and listen and visit school sites and just check and just see how things are going and all of that. But what can we do to make things better? And we have to work hard and diligently at what we do. And I believe that we can do the things we can do if we just, you know, not fuss and fight with each other. Martin Luther King said, when he gave his "I have a dream" speech, you know, that one day that we all will be able to sit down at the Brotherhood of Table together and that we will be able to work together and that we will be able to hold hands together and share together. It's about building. It's about understanding and really taking pride. I, you know, for me, you know, I'm a product of the school district. All of my family came through this school district. From my father, my mother, my brothers. All of my family been here for generations, and I'm a product of this area. I'm a proud graduate of Kennedy High School. I'm alumni. I'm from here. This is my home. You can't root me up out of my home. But I tell you one thing, we got to do better and stay together and do the right thing. We all make mistakes. Show me a perfect man and a perfect woman. There ain't nobody perfect. But an honest man and honest woman would do better, and we all are striving to do better. And I want to say to our student trustees, welcome aboard. It's good to have you guys, and seeing quite a few of you guys so far. And so, and I'm a big advocate of our students, because I worked with our students at El Cerrito High School over these years, and I helped many students go to the next level. And I'm proud, because it makes me proud, because when I see them out there, they graduated from here, and I can say, and when I see them, it makes me happy. So keep in mind, we got a lot of work to do, but we fuss and fight and this and that. It ain't gonna go nowhere. So my favorite, my favorite word is love is high. You can't get over it. It's so deep, you can't get under it, and love is so wide, you can't get around it. So, and I leave it at that. And we're going to be going into closed session, just to finish it up. There's both, just one item in closed session, and it shouldn't take long, and so we will. And after that, we adjourn the meeting. So. Yeah, so we want to close session. And I want to thank everyone. Good evening, but we go into closed session. And now we are on adjournment, adjourning. The meaning, good night, everyone.
Point of order, President Christian, you need to announce the next scheduled Board of Education meeting, sir. That's H.
Yes, the next meeting for the West Contra Costa School Board will be February the second here at DeJohn Middle School at six thirty P M. And at this time, we're closing out, and now we adjourned. Good night, everyone. Stay safe. Wear a good mask, get vaccinated, and get boosted, and good luck to the students and the new semester. Have a blessed evening. Good night, everyone. Maybe it's a journey.
Happy birthday, trustee Gonzalez.